Call the meeting to order in one minute. I hereby call this reconvene this meeting of the Williamsburg James City County School Board. Can I please have a motion to certify closed session?
Madam Chair, I certify that to the best of each member's knowledge, the Williamsburg James City County School Board, while in closed session, discussed only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements as stated in Virginia law, and that only such public matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you, Mrs. Donner. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Hunley. Ms. Oliver?
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Mr. Hoseng.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mr. Riffel.
Aye.
Dr. Cavassos.
Aye.
Ms. Chen.
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye.
And can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Riffel. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Ms. Chen. Ms. Oliver?
Mr. Riffel.
Aye.
Dr. Cavassos.
Aye.
Ms. Chen.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Mr. Hoseng.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye.
And Ms. Chen, would you lead us tonight in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Sure.
Absolutely. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. And we will now move on to announcements and superintendent's report. Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next week is Public School Volunteer Week, but one week of recognition is not enough. We want to get a head start in thanking everyone who volunteers their time and talent to support WJCC schools. In a few moments, we will recognize our Volunteers of the Year. They represent just a handful of the many generous individuals from our community who support our students and staff. Thank you so much for all you do. April is month of the military child, and our schools have chosen various ways to celebrate and show support for the military children in our community. One way our schools are supporting these students is by participating in Purple Up for Military Kids. Join us in wearing purple tomorrow, April 17th, as we recognize the unique and challenging experiences that military children face. Save the date. Join our HR team on Thursday, May 2nd between 3:00 and 6:00 p.m. for a job fair at school board and central office. We're interviewing for teaching positions across all WJCC schools' locations for the 24-25 school year. On-site interviews are available, and conditional offers will be made to qualified applicants. Please apply online in advance if you can at wjccschools.org/careers. And finally, don't forget to join us on Friday, April 26th between 3:00 and 7:30 at Berkeley Middle School for Kindergarten Registration Family Fest. Will your child be five or before September 30th this year? If so, it's time for kindergarten. Take care of your child's registration and bring the whole family out to enjoy free live music, games, activities, and food for purchase. We look forward to seeing you as we celebrate the class of 2037. Thank you, Madam Chair. That concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. I believe Ms. Chen has a report from CAC.
Yes, I do. I just have a brief recognition and celebration for the progress made in attendance and participation in CAC. So, CAC is the Special Education Advisory Committee, and we have experienced an increased participation from citizens and moving forward as a group by reaching quorum at all the meetings. And I just want to publicly thank Dr. Bo Master. He's our Special Education Parent Resource Coordinator for all his hard work and advocacy. Also, I want to thank the committee members for their time serving on CAC, and a special thank you to Dr. Brown and Dr. Matthews for their leadership. We have one more meeting of the year. It is on May 9th, 6:30, Room 300 in the CO Annex.
Thank you, Ms. Chen. Were there any other board member reports that...
Nope.
Okay. Then we will move on to our student and staff recognition. Mrs. Hunley, will you join me on the floor?
Good evening, Madam Chair. Tonight, we are excited to express appreciation to organizations and individuals that make a tremendous impact on our learning and working environment. First, we would like to recognize the counseling team at James River Elementary School. The team recently earned the Recognize ASCA Model Program, or RAMP designation. Can Darian Etheridge and Jennifer Smith please come forward? National RAMP recognition is a designation given by the American School Counselor Association to schools that successfully document how their counseling program has impacted student achievement, attendance, and behavior. James River is just one of 138 schools across the country to earn the designation this year, and the school will be recognized at the ASCA National Conference this summer. Our thanks to Ms. Etheridge and Ms. Smith for their work and leadership in helping students gain valuable learning strategies, self-management skills, and social skills to achieve academic success. Congratulations. Next, we will recognize three community organizations named to the 2024 Virginia School Boards Association Business Honor Rule because of their impact on our students and schools. Honorees, please come forward as I call your name. The James City County Williamsburg Master Gardener Association. James City County Williamsburg Master Gardener Association has been vital supporter of WJCC schools' school gardens, which provide a hands-on outdoor classroom for students to learn how plants grow, where their food comes from, and where their food comes from. Master gardeners provide lessons integrated across the curriculum, from science to writing, as students learn to become stewards of the earth. We deeply appreciate the work the master gardeners have done to maintain our school gardens throughout the years, and the time they spend nurturing and helping our students grow alongside the garden. The next is the Williamsburg Chapter of the League of Women Voters. Though a representative was not able to join us tonight, the Williamsburg Chapter of the League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan group whose main objective is to increase voter participation. Volunteers from the League visit each high school in the fall and spring to host voter registration drives, providing students with information on upcoming primary and regular election dates, and requirements for registration, as well as in-person absentee and mail-in voting. This organization is an invaluable partner in providing the opportunity for our students to exercise our nation's most important civic responsibility and right, the right to vote. And finally, Huntington Ingalls Industries, Inc., Newport New Shipbuilding. Though a representative was not able to join us tonight, Huntington Ingalls Industries, Inc., HII Newport New Shipbuilding, has avidly supported WJCC schools' college and career readiness programming. Since the mock interview event began in 2022, multiple HII employees have served as interviewers. HII has also participated in the senior hiring event for the last two years, resulting in several of our students receiving full-time job offers upon graduation. An employee from Newport New Shipbuilding also serves on our school board Career Ready Advisory Committee, helping to ensure that our students are college and career-ready when they graduate. Thank you for your impact on the students, both as students and future employees. And finally, we extend our sincere appreciation to all the volunteers who support WJCC schools every day. Tonight, we celebrate 15 outstanding volunteers for their contributions. Volunteers of the Year, as your name is called, please come forward to be recognized. Audience, please hold your applause until all volunteers come forward. From Bright Beginnings, Lisa Aiello. From Clara Bird Baker, Gail Weaver. From DJ Montague, Jennifer Talafaro. From James River, Joseph Robinson. From Matthew Whaley, Linda Eaton. From Norwich, Marcia Munn. From Stonehouse, Jennifer Hansen. From Hornsby, Katie Kunkel. From James Blair, Rachel Jett. From Tuano, Karen Snowden. From Lafayette, April Lawrence. And from War Hill, Michael Willen. We also want to recognize Sophia Farley from J. Blaine Blatton, Rodney Walker from Berkeley, and Adrian Tripilo from Jamestown, who are unable to join us this evening. Thank you for our volunteers. These volunteers spend countless hours in our schools and contribute their time, talents, and expertise to support our students. We are grateful for their unwavering dedication to and strong sense of advocacy for our students' success. Each of these individuals has an important role in our team, and it is a privilege to take this moment to thank them for their partnership. Congratulations to our 2024 Volunteers of the Year. Madam Chair, this concludes recognitions for this evening.
Thank you to everyone who's recognized tonight, everyone that works together to make our school system work and be as good as we can be. We will now move on to item 5.02, School Spotlight, and tonight we are going to hear from Lafayette High School.
The name of our chapter is Lafayette Rams for Change. My students work really hard, and they're genuine. You know, what they're doing comes from the heart.
Preview. Hi, good evening, Madam Chair. Members of the board, Dr. Heron, thank you for this opportunity tonight. It is with great pleasure that I share some comments about the Lafayette Family, Career, Community, and Leadership Club, also known as FCC LA. Aristotle posed this question, "What is the essence of life?" His answer, "To serve others and do good." This should be the motto for our FCC LA club, because at its core, this is what they do each and every day. In a world where the number of likes matters on social media, and we communicate by sending messages that disappear, this group of students is a back-to-basics type of group. Their likes come from when they spend time playing bingo with our senior citizens. Their message of service to the community never vanishes. When they pick up trash and collect cans for cancer. Their work was recognized most recently by the state FCC LA conference. I found this definition of a social media influencer. A social media influencer is a user of social media who has established credibility. The video you are about to watch will highlight a group of young people who we will call "community influencers." A special thank you to Ms. Lanham, their teacher, and their club sponsor. Her efforts are greatly appreciated. I hope you enjoy the video tonight. Thank you.
The name of our chapter is Lafayette Rams for Change. My students work really hard, and they're genuine. You know, what they're doing comes from the heart. So, we're trying to encourage people, and we're trying to lead by example.
If you don't do it, are you gonna expect other people to do it? Why not do it yourself?
Our students have had a partnership with a nursing home here in the community. There was a sense that folks in the nursing home were lonely, and so Mrs. Lanham and her classes figured out doing arts and crafts, and they've done bingo, and this is how they give back to the community.
But they love to tell stories, and it's just very heartwarming.
They realize that, you know, it's not about what you're getting, it's about what you're giving.
I feel like it's important that we, as a community, come together to look out for and pay more attention to them.
It makes me feel like I'm doing something for someone, like I'm helping someone.
And after they went, they're asking them to go back. They thought it was really fun and really neat, and the residents were very receptive to them being there. So, I think that took them out of their shell.
We just wanted to make them smile, because everybody needs to socialize and have connections with people, and they love us, and I love them too.
So, for our students, it gives them a real-world experience. You know, that's what our community wants. They wanna see transferable skills.
They're getting skills for a lifetime.
Certainly our community is better, because we have young people who are picking up a, maybe something that's embedded in our history as Americans, which is, you know, to help those who are in need, but especially make your community better instead of waiting until you're in your twenties or your thirties. They're doing this as 14- and 15-year-olds. It's a very exciting skill to build.
We have productive citizens here, and these are kids that I believe that they're gonna continue to give back to their communities. They see what it's all about, and hopefully they'll continue.
Thank you, Mr. Rice, for bringing us that incredibly inspiring video, and commend everyone who's a member of the FCC LA club. That's truly inspiring, and for all the young people out there who think, you know, someday, "I wanna change the world," that's where it starts. And so, that was really wonderful. Thank you. All right, we will now move on to public comment. Mrs. Donner will read instructions.
It is at this point in our meeting where citizens are invited to address the board. Those citizens desiring to speak have submitted speaker cards to the clerk prior to the start of tonight's meeting. These speakers are asked to come to the podium when their names are called, state their names for the record, and direct their comments to the chair of the board. It is the board's interest and desire that all comments are heard and respected. Hence, the citizens are asked to not engage in applauding, verbal outbursts, or any other type of demonstrations during the presentations. Personnel matters are not considered in public meetings. Therefore, the board requests that all speakers refrain from making reference to specific individuals in any form or fashion. Though the board does not respond to your comments, your comments are heard and appreciated. Each speaker is allocated two minutes to make their presentation, and the board asks that you respect this time limitation. Also, please be reminded that no time may be yielded to another speaker. Your acceptance and adherence to these guidelines will be greatly appreciated. Thank you, Madam Chair. My directions are concluded.
Thank you, Mrs. Donner, and given the number of speakers we have tonight, the rules will be strictly enforced, just so everyone knows going forward, without exception.
I am going, we have 50 speakers tonight, so I'm going to call four at a time so that you can line up so that we can be efficient. Our first speaker is E. And please forgive me if I don't pronounce everyone's name exactly perfectly, but the first is E. Catering Shelton. That person will be followed by Roseanne Redden, who will be followed by Christine Payne, and who will be followed by Steve Mainz.
Good evening. My name is Katrina Shelton. I'm a lip instructor at Hornsby Middle School, more known as an ESL teacher.
Good?
Mm-hmm.
Do you need me to repeat that?
No, it's okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Every student deserves access to free education. I did not have to memorize all those phrases. I have working proficiency in all of those languages. I'm an individual, a mother, a teacher, an immigrant, and a naturalized American citizen who has lived in the United States all her adult life. I have a bachelor's degree in intercultural communications and a master's degree in education. Every child that I teach did the same thing I did over 14 years ago. They moved here to use their full potential to have a better life. I am the kind of immigrant who does the work that many people in this room would not want to have. I was offered a six-figure job in Washington, DC because of the knowledge and experience that I have as a multilingual learner, and I turned it down. And perhaps one of the reasons is so that I have a chance to stand in front of you today and speak. My students and I are an asset to this country in this whole division, not a liability. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shelton. No applause. There's no applause.
Next is Roseanne Redden.
Good evening. My name is Roseanne Redine. I am a taxpayer in James City County, and Stonehouse is my district for schools. I am a retired teacher after 33-plus years of teaching in New Jersey, Arizona, California, Hong Kong, and Estonia. I worked as my colleagues' representative with many of the school boards that had hired me. I was a professor of ESL at an American college in Estonia for class consisting of Estonian, Russian, Lithuanian students, and one from China. His parents own the restaurant in the capital, Tallinn. I am very concerned and would like to have my information regarding something that happened on the board at the last meeting related to a non-English-speaking students and their current education plan. The two minutes I'm given to speak are not nearly enough to tell you how I really am incensed and disgusted I am by the remark of one of the members of this board, calling Mr. Unknown Name, "an evil and inflammatory word." I believe he should be given credit for doing the job he was elected to do, that is, making our schools exceptional places of learning for all the students. He did his research and found it necessary to present it before the new budget would be voted for. I agree. How strange that the person who insinuated him swearing, in her swearing-in for school board, stressed the importance of public education, and that she would represent all students and parents.
Thank you, Ms. Redine. Thank you. You can submit written remarks to the clerk.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Christine Payne.
Good evening. My name is Christine Payne. I live in James City County. I'm a nurse and a volunteer at Old Town Medical and Dental Center. We provide health and wellness care for the workforce and residents of the historic triangle, and I'm here to speak on behalf of some of my patients, the children who were targeted during last month's meeting. First, I'll call your attention to the Virginia Department of Education's code, specifically as it pertains to students from other countries, and I provided a memorandum for your information. Not only are school divisions prohibited from denying public education to school-aged children because of their documentation status, but they're also not permitted to inquire as to a student's citizenship or visa status as a condition of enrollment, and in no uncertain terms. Is it legal to require notification of arriving student's status to other parents, or designate school funds specifically for the children who are here, quote-unquote, "legally" as suggested? I take issue with the distinction made between those children characterized as "our" students, as opposed to the newly arriving students with limited English proficiency. We are all James City County and Williamsburg School District residents. When we talk about children in our public schools, we are talking about all of our children. The parents of the students that were marginalized last month are part of the backbone of our local economy. They are the workforce that support the hotels and restaurants of our tourism industry. They're the laborers who work on construction and landscape crews and VDOT. They were designated as essential workers during the height of the pandemic, when many of you stayed home and worked in safety. Their children deserve equitable access to the best of our public schools, and just like every other child who has been marginalized and discriminated against because of their race, ethnicity, or gender identity, they deserve our respect.
Thank you, Ms. Payne.
Our next speaker is Steve Mainz, and then the next four are Curtis Stolt, Kara McLean, Susan Franz, and Emma Munis.
Hello, I'm Stephen Mainz. I'm from, in James City County, and I rise
I'm in, from, in, uh, James City County, and I rise as my very first school board to, uh, support the education and children, of children with unique and special needs. They deserve a quality education even if they're dropped in classrooms without coordination with or training for the teachers. But I'm most concerned about what these children are learning outside the classroom, particularly from the adults responsible for their care. Sixty-one years ago today, Dr. King from a cell in Birmingham outlined four basic steps: collection of the facts to determine whether injustices exist, co, uh, negotiation, self-purification, and direct action. It seems that many jumped over the first three and launched a coordinated, direct attack. This is a terrible example to set up for our children. What's worse, none of that wasted effort taught one student to form a grammatical sentence or multiply fractions. None mitigated the impact of the children already in the classroom. None helped the harried teacher who adjusted on the fly, then went home to change and augment their lesson plan once again to, to assist children that they may or may not be trained to help. No, the misguided storm and fury confused our children who are supposed to be learning positive methods of conflict resolution. It's so distrust in them among members of the school board and in our community. This was made all the worse because it was aided by officials whose job it is to provide data to enable school board oversight and the organizations that collect news to support teachers. I would ask respectfully that instead of sowing division and showboating, we teach our children by listening to each other, extending the benefit of the doubt, providing transparency upward and downward, and above all, finding solutions based on shared data to help all of our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Maines.
Uh, next is Curtis Stolt.
Hello, my name is Curtis Stolt. I'm a resident in James City County. One of my children attended one of the James City County schools in the past. To quote a board member's statement from the last regular board meeting, "For me to live in my integrity and values, I will use my remaining time to defend one of our school board members," who was inappropriately and unprofessionally slandered at the last regular school board meeting. The board member who was falsely accused of a racist trope was doing his job asking difficult and uncomfortable questions about real issues facing the school board and the school administration. The board member's reference to non-English speaking students apparently triggered another board member who changed the words to Spanish-speaking students as she publicly and unprofessionally called the other board member a racist. We all know that both English-speaking students and non-English speaking students are made up of all races and speak many languages, as we found out earlier. Where is the racism in that? The problem identified are real and are not being adequately addressed by our school division. The rapidly enlarging group of non-English speaking students is severely challenging already underpaid and overworked teachers. Thank you, teachers. Open, honest, and often difficult discussion of all problems in open and public meetings is essential to solving the real problems that face our schools. Accusations of racism, when in fact, race is not an issue, only stifles already difficult conversation. Finally, let me give you some insight as to the character and integrity of the board member accused of racism. As a lieutenant colonel, following a long deployment in Afghanistan, he was awarded the Bronze Star, the highest, the fourth highest award which can be awarded, given to any member of service. The three higher awards are the Congressional Medal of Honor, Distinctive Service Cross, and the Silver Star. The Bronze Star is awarded to service members for heroic achievement or heroic service in a combat zone.
Thank you, Mr. Stolt.
Thank you for your time.
The next person is Kara McLean.
Hello, the family life material I had seen in the schools is now current. Nineteen ninety material is gone, and most of the, is, most material is concurrent with what is online. I was assured all students have a binder and a, and a computer to view all the material. On April tenth, only one school I spoke with did not yet have a computer in the office. Make sure the complete curriculum is in every school printed audio and visual. Make sure everything possible is in the school binders, and the websites and videos are easily accessible at home and in the schools, as some websites and videos may concern parents. To open and view videos and websites, you may have to click Control P for a PDF file. Because of the sensitive nature of this particular subject, there are more rules and guidelines to safeguard children than in any other class. Make sure to follow the codes and guidelines. Remind parents they can review the material, can opt their children out of any section, and can ask the teacher to see their complete lesson plans. Publicity, I mean publicly tell fourth and fifth grade parents their children are taught sensitive subjects separately, as the Board of Education guidelines say. When viewing material I mentioned, remember to, in most middle and high school, children are taught boys and girls together, including puberty, puberty and reproduction sections. Look at the highlighted codes and guidelines scanned to you from March's meeting. Be as clear and transparent with parents as possible. These are their children. As school board members, you are responsible as the last say regarding curriculum over the committee and anyone else. You are responsible to bless the children with what you choose, but also to God. Read Matthew eighteen ten. Remember, school board members, uh, school board guidelines must be age-appropriate and abstinence education with the exclusive purpose to teach teenagers why it is wise to keep themselves from marriage. KidsHealth.org, um, has teen material in sixth and seventh grade, including, um, male reproduction, female reproduction, STDs and these things. Please look at them online, um, on the regular website, uh, or regular internet or website of the school. Tell the teachers they cannot use this material.
Thank you, Ms. McLean.
The next is Susan Franz.
Good evening, Susan Franz. Welcome to the new America in the town we affectionately call the birthplace of America. This is the new America where name-calling and character defamation replaces critical thinking and finding creative solutions to problems. We witnessed this at the last board meeting. A duly-elected member, duly-elected, I want you to know, member was the only member who had the courage to ask critical questions in order to fulfill, fulfill his fiduciary responsibility as a board member. Unfortunately, instead of receiving answers, his character was defamed from the stage by an appointed member who only has to answer to a small group, not citizens who elected her. Also, another board member subsequently used his social media accounts to continue the character assassination. It is sad to see how the school administration and board refused to adequately address the board member's questions and actively participated in character defamation. I am asking that the school board and administration reconsider their actions, and apologies be made to the board member who asked important questions. In the future, hard questions require the board and administration to do hard work necessary to find solutions. Seek to understand those with whom you disagree. Seek to find answers together to hard questions. Name-calling will never accomplish unity, which is something that the board and administration has said they seek to achieve. Currently, you are doing nothing but creating division. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Franz.
Next is Emma Munis, and as to get the next four ready, we have Chelsea Hilliard, it is, will be after her, then Lynn Witt, Chuck Colgrove, and Terry Ricks.
I'm an ESL teacher at Jamestown High School. I am also a resident of the Stonehouse District, and I have some answers to questions that were posed, um, at the last meeting by a school board member. As a teacher, I would like to make it clear that all students, no matter where they are from, how they get to our building, or when they arrive, are welcome in our classrooms. As teachers, it is our job to make students feel welcome from the moment they walk in the door on their first day to the day they proudly walk across the graduation stage. As professionals, teachers adapt. It is a part of the job. Whether it be new students, new curriculum, new standards, or new policies adopted by the board partway through the year, teachers are innovative. To be honest, thinking on my feet is part of my favorite job, part of my favorite thing about teaching. Each day brings something new, and if that's a new student to my class, then our community is brighter for it. Our students who come to us learning English add to the linguistic and cultural diversity of our school community. So what does support look like for our MLs and general education teachers in the classroom? As a team of two ESL teachers at Jamestown, my colleague and I collaborate with nine general education teachers, teach four English classes and two resource classes. We work with counseling staff to support students and their general education teachers. We engage with families, PTA, community members, to make sure that all students have access to equitable education. Finally, as a constituent of the Stonehouse area and taking my teacher's hat off, I would like to say the words expressed by a board member at the last meeting are not representative of my beliefs. That view on the education system is severely lacking in understanding, and as adults and professionals, I expect my school board member to have done their research before speaking on a topic.
Thank you, Ms. Munis.
Next is Chelsea Hilliard.
Hi, my name is, uh, Dr. Chelsea Hilliard, and I'm a school counselor within the division who proudly supports my school's multilingual learners. Our multilingual learners are called just that because they do in fact speak and learn in multiple languages, which I am constantly in awe of. The population of multilingual learners in the US has consistently and will continue to grow each year. I am here today to voice my support of all students, as well as share already public knowledge on the legality of multilingual learners in K through twelve education, specifically focusing on three legal cases. Firstly, let's reflect on Brown versus the Board of Education. This landmark case in nineteen fifty-four declared segregation of public schools unconstitutional. While it primarily addressed racial segregation, its impact reverberated throughout educational policies. By dismantling the notion of separate but equal, Brown versus the Board laid the foundation for equitable education for all, including multilingual learners. Fast forward to Lau versus Nichols in nineteen seventy-four. This case focused specifically on the rights of non-English speaking students. The Supreme Court ruled that schools must provide appropriate language assistance to ensure these students have equal access to education. This decision recognized the importance of language proficiency in learning and mandated schools to offer support for multilingual learners. Lastly, Serna versus Portales in nineteen seventy-four further reinforced the rights of multilingual learners. The court emphasized that language barriers should not be a hindrance to educational opportunities. Schools were directed to implement programs tailored to the linguistic needs of these students, ensuring they receive a quality education regardless of their proficiency in English. Together, these cases form a powerful trilogy of legal precedents championing the rights of multilingual learners in K through twelve schools. They underscore the principle of educational equity, reminding us that every student, regardless of linguistic background, deserves an equal chance to grow, learn, and succeed. As literal residents of Williamsburg, our multilingual learners more than qualify to be included in discussions of a school budget that impacts all school students.
Thank you, Dr. Hilliard.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Lynn Witt.
Good evening. I am Lynn Witt, an ESL teacher at Jamestown High School. At the March sixteenth school board meeting, a member of the board expressed concern about the increase in numbers of ESL students in WJCC, wanting to know why they are here and where they come from. I will use court cases to speak about why this information is not necessary when supporting and educating our students. It is our duty to ensure that every student, regardless of their background or language proficiency, feels a sense of belonging and receives an equitable education. These principles of education equity are founded on historical court cases. Let's reflect on Alvarez versus Lemon Grove, a landmark case that challenged segregation in schools. This case taught us the invaluable lesson that every child deserves access to quality education regardless of their ethnicity or language. Every child who walks through our school doors deserves an equal opportunity to learn and to thrive. Secondly, Plyer versus Doe emphasized the importance of providing education to all children regardless of their immigration status. The court affirmed that denying education to undocumented children not only violates their rights, but also undermines our collective future. Our ESL students, regardless of their immigration status, are integrable members of our school community. By nurturing their potential and providing them with the tools they need to succeed, we not only uphold the law, but we also uphold the values of compassion and inclusivity. In conclusion, the pursuit of educational equity is not just a legal obligation, but a moral imperative. As deeply rooted parts of our education system, we have the power and responsibility to create an environment where every student feels valued, supported, and empowered to reach all full potential. In WJCC schools, we will continue to do just that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Witt.
Next up is Chuck Colgrove.
Madam Chair, members, superintendent, good evening. Uh, in the past, I've heard, uh, the school board and members of the division always say students are the primary concern, and, which is as it should be, right? Uh, but for the past month, however, the story has been the fact that there are non-English speaking students in the system, followed by a preconceived notion that they are all Hispanic, which we all know isn't true. Their presence isn't the problem, okay? But that's what's been sucking up all the oxygen in the room for the last month. The, the problem is the ability of the school system to address the needs of all the students within the district. Publicly attacking a board member in, in a, in a meeting does nothing to acknowledge or solve that particular problem. So the community, and that's everybody here on the dais, everybody behind me, taxpayers, students, teachers, parents, everybody, the community deserves graduates of the school system that are able to contribute to that society to the best of their ability and minimize their reliance on the society, okay, to the best of their ability. The, the community deserves a school board and administration whose goal is creating the best possible learning environment and not advancing a personal agenda, and that requires a board of decision-makers that can acknowledge uncomfortable issues and work together to make hard choices and find solutions. That requires an administration that provides decision-quality information to those decision-makers, and it also requires transparency to students, parents, and taxpayers to develop trust and confidence in that enterprise's ability to accomplish the educational goals and mission. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Colgrove.
Uh, Terry Ricks will be next, followed by John Gulick, Robert Mandrioli, Jessica Anderson, and Julia Cooley.
Good evening, I'm Terry Ricks. I live in Williamsburg, twenty-five sixty-one William Taker Drive. First of all, I want to commend you for your efforts and time and critical thinking, trying to provide the best education, uh, the children of the residents of this county and city. However, what are you doing? In response to some common sense questions and otherwise observations, you light a metaphorical match during the debate, something more suitable for a street protest. Years ago, when I first moved to Williamsburg, I started asking questions about why did the school board do this? Why did they do that? Why didn't do this? Unfortunately, I was very frustrated because most of the time, the answer I got was that's what Richmond tells us to do. So I hope you are all working to improve what's going on around here and trying to correct the oversight of mislabeled, misinformed policy out of Richmond. There seems to be another problem, and I think that if these, if the additional effort is made by the parents to teach their kids and help them with their homework and with their manners, so they don't have to learn their manners in school, I think that would help a great deal. I know you're trying, please try harder. I know many of you object to what I say here, but I want to say, power to the parents. Also, the city is overrepresented by the school board. Last but not least, no child was targeted at the last meeting. No one, I think, of sound mind wants to deny education.
Thank you, Mr. Ricks.
The Stonehouse representative was targeted. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is John Gulick, followed by Robert Mandrioli.
Good evening, my name is John Gulick. I'm a proud parent and a WJCC teacher at War Hill High School. I had a lot of frustration. I wanted to come here originally to kind of blow off some steam in my disgust, but then I realized, I don't care about you. I, uh, I care about my students. I wanted to share with the school board and the community you represent my teaching experience of teaching multilanguage learner students. It's been a real privilege to engage and develop a relationship with so many EL students that I have taught over the past seventeen years in public education here in Hampton Roads. I've had the opportunity to work with students from Afghanistan, Mexico, Guatemala, South Sudan, Indonesia, Philippines, Kenya, Ghana, Russia, Peru, Brazil, South Korea, and many, many more. And as an educator, I'm careful not to make sweeping generalizations, but I will say to the school board and to the community that quite confidently I can say that in all my years of experience, by far, these students were some of my best students. They were. Although a lot of people outside of education and outside of the classroom don't realize is that EL students overwhelmingly work harder, show more respect, and generally show an honest appreciation for the education, more so than many. an honest appreciation for the education, more so than many of our homegrown students. You know, I teach not for the money, but for some selfish reasons that I learn every day from the students in front of me. It's selfish, but I appreciate it and I grow and I learn from them. And I teach students that come from places of war, of conflict, of totalitarian governments, and I watch them how to handle adolescents with grace and humility and kindness and empathy towards others every single day. It amazes me, and I feel privileged to be here standing up and telling my community what special people, what special humans these kids are. And I'm so thankful, but my life is richer for being in front of them and having that shared experience. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gulick.
I'd just like to say, I know there's lots of standing, there are some seats here in the front for those who would like to have a seat. Robert Mandrioli is next, followed by Jessica Anderson.
Good evening, Madam Chairman. I'm going to say some of the members here, there's a reason why you're here this evening. That reason is because we, the people, put you here. We elected you, and in some cases, you were appointed. You were not appointed or elected to point fingers at other board members. You were not elected or appointed to get engaged in name-calling, racial epithets, whatever happened last month. One of the things that many of us in the community learned was that if you are in the teaching mode, if we are in a learning mode, is what happened last month an indication of how we should act among our fellow citizens? The issue of limited English-speaking people, non-English speaking students, hasn't happened since last week, it's been with us for a long time. So shouldn't it be up to the School Board to decide what should be done about it over a period of time, instead of calling in one of your members a racist? Shouldn't it be up to the School Board to try to come up with reasonable solutions? You've had plenty of time to do that. So why should we disparage somebody's reputation and engage in character assassination when this School Board member has the courage, the integrity, and the initiative to raise a serious issue and try to discuss it? So instead of pointing fingers at one another and deciding who's racist and who's not racist, shouldn't we be looking for reasonable solutions? Shouldn't we be looking for ways to alleviate the situation? We have a School Board member here that's not afraid. Anybody that does not call for a rebuke, censor of the members that were involved in this exchange last month would...
Thank you, Mr. Mandrioli.
Our next speaker is Jessica Anderson, followed by Julia Cooley.
Good evening, members of the Board and Dr. Herring. I had prepared words, but I'm just going to kind of go off the cuff here. A lot of people are talking about some, you know, supposed questions to the Board of what's being hidden. Let's be super honest here, nothing's being hidden. The only thing I see is a board member misleading his constituents. We have clear law, both at the federal and state level, that says we must, we have a job, a duty, to teach these students that are in our classrooms. This is not a question of budgetary issues, this is not a question of they're disrupting classrooms, this is a fact that this, as a school body, it is your job. McKinney-Vento says that you are required by federal law to give these students an education. In fact, it says you are to give them one immediately, without question, and even yes, without documentation sometimes. And even in that situation, we are giving our schools twenty-four to forty-eight hours' notice, even with this immediate need that these students need to be educated. When you refer to our children as illegals, when you imply that they are here and they don't belong here, I'm sorry, you're targeting our children. Period, the end. So anyone in this room that is questioning that is lying to themselves. We have had an issue with influx of homeless students and ELL students for years. This is not a new issue, but it's now been made into a political issue because of our national politics, because immigration is a cool talking point from a particular political party. And I'm really sad. I'm sad that another School Board member who blatantly called what it was racism, not racist, racism, is being targeted tonight, because calling something what it is is what we all should be doing. So I appreciate the members that have spoken out publicly. I want to thank you, each and every one of you, for protecting our children and doing the job you were elected and/or appointed to do. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson.
Julia Cooley is next, and she will be followed by Maria Grulacchio, I'm so sorry, Grulacchio, I gotta work on my Italian. John Coran Curran, Gray Lane, and Mike Joseph.
Good evening, I am an employee of WJCC schools and a resident of James City County. After the March 16th School Board meeting, I looked for guidance about our school district's stance on educating the students in our community. On the About WJCC page of the school district's website, the mission statement reads, "Pursuing Excellence and Championing the Success of All Students." After some reflection, these words gave me comfort and the courage to advocate for all students at tonight's board meeting. At Jamestown High School, my colleagues and I worked diligently to provide meaningful and accessible instruction and emotional support for our multilingual learners. Many of these students and their families have experienced hardships throughout their life journeys, and they appreciate the opportunity to learn and to become a part of our community. Just like all the students at Jamestown, the multilingual learners are kind, thoughtful, and inquisitive. They are an integral part of our school family, and I cannot imagine what our school would be like if the multilingual learners were not there. Each of our students brings their own uniqueness, creativity, and talent, and these contributions make Jamestown High School an exciting place to be. All students in our school district are worthy of a premier education regardless of their nation of origin, abilities, English proficiency, cultural heritage, belief system, or gender expression. I'm proud to work at Jamestown and for this school district, and I'm confident that our district employees and community members will continue to uphold our shared values of a fair, equitable, and inclusive education for all children. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cooley.
Our next speaker.
I'm Gloria Galiacho, James City County. I'm going to read an excerpt and paraphrase from the WJCC Policy Manual on Foundations and Commitments. "The WJCC School Board is committed to providing equal opportunity for every student to achieve intellectual, social, and emotional physical growth and ensuring each student is equipped to communicate effectively, be competent in both the workplace and higher education, feel confident of the ability to make creative and constructive decisions. I spent time as a substitute teacher in WJCC school system. I can attest that non-English speaking students sit in their respective corners and struggle to keep up with their English-speaking classmates. Teachers I have talked to have witnessed and seen the same. This issue has been going on for years without solutions. This is not a political issue, it's a human issue. One of the board members here was brave enough to discuss the lack of resources in our schools to help these students be successful and reach higher education. Instead of coming together to find solutions for these children, all we saw were baseless and slanderous attacks against his character. I, myself, a Mexican woman, can say he never mentioned anything in his comments. They were not racist, they needed to be said. I implore the people who attacked him so vehemently to focus their passions to help these children. This is what you wanted to do when elected, correct? I call on the schoolroom members to release information on the past and present success of rate of non-English speaking students and what they plan to do moving forward to make sure they are successful, graduate, and strive for higher education. You owe it to them, their families, and our community." Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Galiacho.
Next is John Coran Curran, followed by Gray Lane.
Good evening, I'm John Coran, with James City County, resident. I'm speaking here tonight to address a couple of things, but first I want to say, there's not a person in this room, now to what side they're taking on this issue, that does not have compassion for the children here. This isn't an issue about that. When I first heard about this issue, I sat through watching the last board meeting seven times to try to pick up what was said that was racist or wrong, and I was not able to find it. There was nothing ever said about not allowing students into classrooms, separating students. The main issue is an ugly truth we have to deal with, and we have been thrown an issue by policies outside of our controls and laws outside of our controls that require us to pay the price for it, in dollars. There's only so many dollars this county has, and we need to do something. I will say, I am ashamed of the actions of some of the School Board members up there and the superintendent on how they reacted. The one thing we fight in this country more than anything right now is cyberbullying, and a few of you took on that to go after one individual. You should apologize immediately because that is not how we want to raise our kids, and you are the leaders of our school and setting the examples. To send out correspondence to schools calling out a false narrative of what was said was also wrong, and I believe the superintendent should be removed for her actions and inactions. We all know the different laws that require all students, no matter what, to be admitted to schools, and we have to deal with those laws as it is. However, there is twenty-seven federal grants available to school districts. I went on to the websites of every one of those grants and could not find a James City County application. I could have missed it, but instead of spending time attacking a fellow board member, why don't you start filling the blanks?
Thank you, Mr. Coran. The next speaker is Gray Lane, followed by Mike Joseph.
Good evening, thank you for having me. I think the School Board needs to, there's a learning curve for anybody that's new. Well, I think you all ought to go out and have a cup of coffee and get together and know one another. It says, get along. On the other hand, I see a lot of people walking around here with hate buttons on. I think the only hate has actually got ignited from this School Board. It was a comment made in the beginning, make a respectable response. Well, the respectable response did not come from that School Board, it did. I coached Little League for over thirty years, and the thing is, I've dealt with students, I love them, and we had practice Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and Saturday. Saturday, we had practice with the parents, the kids played the parents, got along, everybody understood one another. Yes, I had boys, I had girls, I had black, I had white on a team. Everybody got along, it was enjoyable. I don't see a racist person on this School Board. We have a mixed combination of people, and that's the way we should get along. As it was said a couple of times, we got dumped on, I don't know, from Congress or whatever, the way our political areas are going, we have to, we have to, I don't know, we have to be responsible for what had come down. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lane.
Mike Joseph is our next speaker, followed by Andrew Casin, Denny Griggs, Marco Sardi, and Ryan Schumaker.
I'm Mike Joseph and live in James City County. I'm here to let you know my thoughts regarding the School Board's comment period at the last meeting. During this time, a School Board member claimed that the comments of another during the discussion of FY25 budget were racist. There are two points I would like to make. I find it inappropriate for a School Board member to make this claim about another member at this meeting. One of the rules for making public comments in this forum is, the comments are not to be personal. This claim, which had no basis, was widely broadcasted throughout the community. Unfortunately, these comments have the potential to harm and misrepresent an individual's reputation. I find that the board member's comments during the budget discussion were not offensive nor racist. There were normal questions and concerns whether or not the schoolteacher's time was being diluted from other students to give special attention to non-English speaking students, and if we should have a special program for non-English speaking students. The board member comments always referred to non-English speaking students and were consistent with the language and description of the WJC's special program, English as a Second Language. And this may be part of the solution, if we focus on it and fund it. Here is the online description of the SL program. Program participants, upon registration in the WJCC public school system, a student's parent or guardian fills out a language survey form to indicate the child's primary language, one spoken at home. Using that information, any existing school records, school staff alert the ESL teacher assigned to that school as need for proficiency testing and possible placement in the ESL program for services. My conclusion is that the board member...
Thank you, Mr. Joseph.
The next speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Joseph. You can submit the statement to the clerk.
Our next speaker is Andrew Casin.
Hello, I'm Andrew Casin, I'm a teacher at Jamestown High School, I'm also the treasurer of the WJCA, and I'm also exhausted, but I'm energized by what my colleagues have said before, so I'll keep my points very simple and very straightforward. I came here to make two points tonight. One, the recent racist comments at the School Board meeting last month do not represent my experience working with ML students, and I think, with all due respect, Madam Chair, there needs to be a better job of making sure this dais actually expresses our values and does not say something that goes against the values that I work tirelessly, what my colleagues work tirelessly for. So I would suggest that such comments be ruled out of order. If need be, do what the Grammys do and start playing the music. My second point is, some School Board members' comments last month do not represent my experience, so let teachers speak for themselves. Let us collectively bargain for what goes into our contracts. If you're serious about improving the success rate of English-language learners or multilingual learners, then why not let us sit down at the table and be partners in this? So please, I urge you, take action, we've worked really hard. There's eight hundred WJCC employees who have signed authorization cards, I see many of them behind me right now, and they have spent their time educating their colleagues about collective bargaining and what it means for us and what a partnership would mean. So please, I urge you, let us have a seat at the table. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Casin.
Our next speaker is Denny Griggs, followed by Marco Sardi.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Denny Griggs, I'm from James City County, really proud to be an American tonight. People speaking out, mostly nervous, not used to doing it like you all do every day. But I have a couple of comments. I'm going to have to speak around some of my writing because I put names in. I'm very concerned about the functionality of this board, very concerned. I believe that JCC and Williamsburg deserve the best for our children and our grandchildren like mine. At the March 19 meeting, I saw something that just sickened me, a grotesque attack on one of our board members, my Stonehouse rep, simply because he was asking valuable questions about non-English speaking students that arrived unannounced and placed in regular classes. He gave examples of the impact on students and the extreme challenges to teachers. He didn't mention the nationality or languages that the students spoke, he asked every question that I would ask. He wanted to know about interpreters, extra teachers, separate classrooms, whatever we needed to do. It was a planning meeting, a budget meeting that you all had. When another representative's turn came around, she used her time to say that his questions were racist tropes, many things that were commented on tonight. Mentioned that he used words like Spanish-speaking children, mentioned that we have to educate all children, and that may be true, you know, but we're not a sanctuary county, we're not a sanctuary city, it's just that simple. So if we get a bus full of people that arrive from nowhere, we don't know where they're coming from, you got to plan for that. You know, it takes money, it takes planning. You want to impact both those kids and our American kids, it's that simple. Now, a lot of these kids might not be illegal immigrants, that's fine and dandy.
Thank you, Mr. Griggs.
Our next speaker is Marco Sardi, followed by... followed by Ryan Schumaker.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board and Dr. Heron. My name is Marco Sardi, president of WJCA and speaking as one of many who are wearing blue behind me. We are here today to support our multilingual students, as I know you have heard. And I would like to thank the board for their commitment to public service and hearing from your constituents. We are trying to make all students feel welcome and valued in our schools and by extension, our community, which is diverse and multifaceted. It is the duty of any teacher to be a good model for what they teach. I would be a poor teacher to not model good citizenship and civic duty, which has brought me here today. It speaks values to our community, and in this particular case, the values of our schools, that I feel compelled to speak about the privilege of being an elected official. The words of leaders carry weight. And if I had my students listen to the last public meeting, I wonder what value that they might feel from that. Would they feel as if we were all part of one team, working together to solve the real problems that we have? Or would they feel that there are our students and other students? As a member of the community and as a teacher, I can ask for nothing less than for an apology to my students for the words chosen for them in this room. Life will throw enough challenges at students as it throws at all of us. And it's our duty as a community to try to raise them to be resilient to challenges and to not be a part of the problem that they will face in their lives. Public education is for everyone by definition. It is not perfect. It sure is not easy. And the process is messy. There are challenges, but we will solve the problems one step at a time, but only if everyone feels like they matter, and I know my students do. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Sardi. Our next speaker is Ryan Schumaker, followed by Pascal Barrow, Jim Galante, Nia Grimes, and Antonia Jara Romero.
Thank you. So first, I'm a student, and I have never, ever, in my time at a public school, seen any multilingual person hinder my or anybody else's education, nor have I ever heard of that being an issue. So I don't know. I'm not really sure why it was brought up at the last meeting. And also, everyone deserves a public education, no matter what background or nationality they have, because they could go on to do great things. I know somebody who is an immigrant, who had public education here and now works at NASA, and they're probably one of the smartest people that I've ever met in my entire life. But if they hadn't had the chance, or if they had been denied just because they were an immigrant, to go to a community college or college or anywhere, then they wouldn't be where they are right now. And that's pretty messed up. So I think that everybody should have an equal chance, no matter where they come from or who they might be. And also, I heard that parents should be notified when somebody who is an immigrant is in their school or classroom. And I think that that information should be kept private in between their families and not be sent out or spread because they would be able to be targeted by people. And I don't think that that's a safe environment for anybody, no matter who they are. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schumaker. No applause. There's no applause. Our next speaker is Pascal Barrow, followed by Jim Galante.
Good evening. My name is Pascal Barrow, and I'm a citizen and resident of the Stonehouse District. And I have two children attending schools in WJCC. I'm here today to express for the record my disappointment and disagreement with the highly inflammatory and bigoted comments made by a member of this board at the last meeting. It can be described as nothing else. Look it up. Bigot in the dictionary. To be clear, I have no problem, just like anyone else in this room, with questioning the appropriate use of our tax dollars, if that's all at war. But I do express concern when a member who sits on the board espouses educational practices that are unconscionable, unethical, or simply illegal, like providing information as to why these students are here, who they are, and are they legally here, which violates privacy and confidentiality policies. Or suggesting we put non-English speaking students in their own classroom with someone who can communicate with them, which puts into question your understanding of least restrictive environment laws. I'll stop with these two examples. But for a board member above all to show a disregard for fundamental, fair, and just educational practices leads me to question the ability of a board member to make appropriate, sound, and equitable decisions for all children, faculty, and staff. Please take due notice that your constituents, who may or may not have elected you to serve, are watching your words and more especially the actions of this board very closely. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barrow. Our next speaker is Jim Galante, followed by Nia Grimes.
My name is Jim Galante. And it just seems to me that the measure for compassion is now measured by a smiling, warm environment and allowing students to graduate and become part of the hospitality industry in our town. That's not compassion. Compassion is providing a full, fair, equal environment for them to learn. And if you have a bulk of Spanish-speaking or any language-speaking students and faced with a total English-speaking environment, you do need to address that. It has to be taken care of. You can't, it's not fair to expect the students to sit in a class for hours and hours and hours with English-speaking people and they don't, they don't, they don't understand what's going on? That's not fair. That's not equal. That's not right. I don't want to see the children who come here, who are immigrants, end up part of the hospitality industry or workers. I want to see them compete with the lawyer, the students who become lawyers, or students who become IT professionals, the students who are working in the corporate world. That's what's fair. And we have to educate them to that level. And now that takes money. The board never asked questions since. Why to start to address where that money is going to come from? How are we going to get it? How are we going to educate those students equally? That's not racism. That's concern. That's love. That's wanting to see them succeed as much as every other student. And it may take extra effort for that to happen. Okay, let's figure that out. But you can't figure it out unless you know the scope of the issue and how to deal with it. That's what he was asking. That's concern. That's love.
No, please, no. There's no applause. You can't follow the rules. We're going to have to ask people to leave the room. Our next speaker is Nia Grimes, followed by Antonio Jara Romero.
Hello, my name is Nia Grimes. I'm a junior at the College of William &amp; Mary and a member of our club, William &amp; Mary's Fighting for Immigrant Rights Club. My fellow community members and school board, I stand here before you today to advocate for our ESL students and their families. These individuals have come to our country, often leaving behind everything they know in search of a better life. They deserve our compassion, our support, and our unwavering commitment to their success. Too often, ESL students are made to feel like outsiders as they don't belong in our schools and our communities. This is unacceptable. These students are just as much a part of our community as anyone else. They bring with them a wealth of diverse experiences, cultures, and perspectives that enrich us all. ESL students and their families deserve access to the resources and support they need to thrive. This includes high-quality language instruction, tutoring, and counseling services. This means ensuring that communication with schools and local government is accessible and inclusive. It means creating an environment where they feel welcomed, valued, and empowered. We must also confront the ugly reality of racial stereotypes and discrimination that too often plague our ESL communities and families. These students and their families are not to be feared or looked down upon. They are hard-working, resilient individuals who are seeking who are seeking a better future for themselves and their loved ones. We must stand up against any and all forms of prejustice and discrimination and make it clear that such behavior will not be tolerated in our community. My friends, the success of our ESL students is the success of our entire communities. When we invest in their well-being and create a culture of belonging, we all reap the benefits. Let us come together with open hearts and minds to support and empower our ESL communities.
Thank you, Ms. Grimes.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Antonio Romero, followed by Jamila Walker, Catherine Haynes, Jennifer Mendez, and Molly Robinson.
Good afternoon. My name is Antonia Jara Romero, and I am an immigrant and a former ESL student myself. First of all, I want to remind those who might think that ESL students and immigrants are taking resources away from citizens and taxpayers, that number one, the United States of America is a country of immigrants. Number two, to believe that all ESL students are illegal is an awful generalization based on its unifobia and racism. And that is a dangerous idea to have in an environment that should be committed to diversity and inclusion. Number three, immigrants are a necessary part of our economy. I'm also an ESL tutor, and the kids I tutor work up to 45 hours of jobs outside of school, proving to be a necessary part of our local economy. Also, not that this is relevant, but illegal immigrants also pay billions of dollars in taxes every year. Lastly, I want to remind all of you that these are children we're talking about. These children have the right to equitable and fair education, which is protected under federal law. Also, as adults, we have a duty to protect and serve them. As a public school system, WJCC should be committed to diversity, inclusion, and equity. Now, I urge you to demonstrate your commitment and show up for ESL kids. Invest in equitable and quality education for all. Make sure they're part of our community because that's the only way we will all become a richer, brighter, stronger community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Romero. Our next speaker is Jamila Walker, followed by Catherine Haynes.
Good evening. I'm Jamila Walker. I'm an employee and I'm also a parent. I'd like to express my deep concern regarding recent comments made by a sitting board member as well as members of our community. It's disheartening to witness a lack of recognition of racism. Addressing inequities within our division requires a willingness to confront these issues head-on. I urge you to engage with diverse perspectives that may differ from your own. The comments about segregating non-English speaking students were racist by the very definition of the term. It's not surprising, though, that the comments were made, but it's truly disappointing that he stands firm in his racist comments. He has publicly attacked my character, and it seems he thought he was above reproach. It's unfortunate that as a Black woman, I may have been seen as an easy target. Finally, I was asked for input by my son's IEP team regarding some of my son's responses to a few in-class activities. I have taken off two afternoons so far to visit my son's classroom because the school has decided that the only way I can visit is if I follow a nine-point process, which includes the principal being available for my visits. Volunteers have more leeway than I do when it comes to visiting my son's school, which is no surprise. We can't wonder, then, when parents don't feel welcome in their child's public school when you place such parameters and claim transparency. That is not transparency. That's gatekeeping. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. Our next speaker is Catherine Haynes, followed by Jennifer Becca Mendez.
Good evening. Catherine Haynes, Kings Point resident. Conversations on the Williamsburg-James City County split have focused on the underperformance of Williamsburg students. And I wanted to point out that the Village Initiative for Equity in Education recently revealed in their 2023-2024 report that many James City County students are also not meeting their full potential. And my hope is that this board is actively advocating to remain a combined district that leverages the economies of scale that that affords to help all kids succeed. April is the month of the military child, and so I would wear blue tonight, but I also am an Army brat, and so I'm in purple and also support blue. My seventh grade year, my first year in Williamsburg, it was my seventh school. And I suggest that the key to finding success for all students lies in the research on the impact of multiple school transitions on military kids, especially with deployed parents. The multiple negative effects can be mitigated by creating a culture of belonging. A culture of belonging that would be for all students, including ESL learners. The research shows increases mental health and the motivation to succeed academically. So thank you for working together to help all kids succeed.
Thank you, Ms. Haynes. Our next speaker is Jennifer Becca Mendez, followed by Molly Robinson.
Good evening, members of the school board and Dr. Heron. My name is Jennifer Becca Mendez. I'm a member of the Village Initiative for Equity in Education. I'm a parent of two WJCC graduates, and I teach at William &amp; Mary. I'm here this evening to support my fellow educators who have spoken so powerfully. And I'm, and I hope that you board members were able to listen. I found it very moving. I'm also here to support my own students who are here tonight because many of them tutor ESL students at WJCC. And they felt strongly enough to tear themselves away from the end of the semester to come here and speak in front of you. And I think that's also a powerful thing to observe. At last month's school board meeting, there were some questions asked. And as an educator, I think it is very important to ask questions and to think critically. But in the official capacity of a public servant and a publicly elective official, common sense questions are not questions that suggest the violation of children's rights to an equal access to education. And that was the meeting, and those were the words that I saw. I'm not sure if a lot of people in the room saw the same video that I saw. Sounds very different what they saw. I do agree that someone stood up with integrity and told and spoke in her truth. And I also agree that we're all here to to serve our children. I wanted to talk about parents' rights and children's rights. Many of the speakers before me, which is like why my comments are a little bit disjointed, talked about children's rights to equal access to public education, protected by all the many laws and a legal framework that's been well-established here tonight. But I wanted to also talk about parents' rights.
Thank you, Dr. Becca Mendez. You can submit your comments. Our next speaker is Molly Robinson, followed by Jennifer Howlett, Beth Ann Claver, Kim Long, and Karen Bergasal.
Good evening. I'm a member of the Village Initiative's executive team and a graduate student at William &amp; Mary. I've been lucky beyond measure to work with some of the fantastic students in our division through the Village Initiative's Local Black Histories Project. But tonight, I'm here to underscore the jarring findings from the Village Initiative's annual equity report, which reveal that our division is failing to adequately serve students with disabilities. The data show that only 16% of students with disabilities at Lafayette High School passed the English Writing SOL compared with 27% of students with disabilities in WJCC as a whole and 24% of students with disabilities across the state. We see a similar pattern here at James Blair with identical gaps in learning outcomes. We must ask what our division can do differently to support the success of students with disabilities. Students of varying needs and abilities enrich our learning environments. And no one, particularly our representatives, should exploit rhetoric that casts any group of students as a burden. In this vein, I'd like to express my support for multilingual students and their families whose contributions to our community are profound and immeasurable. I hope that the board will honor the rich diversity of learners in our division by investing in programs and policies that ensure equity. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Our next speaker is Jennifer Howlett, followed by Beth Ann Claver.
Good evening. As someone who works within the school division and directly with our students, I was very disappointed to hear the misrepresentation- disappointed to hear the misrepresentation of our ELL students. I do not see these disruptions as claimed, I do not see these as disruptions as claimed, and I have witnessed the benefit of ELL students in the classroom, learning with their English-speaking peers. Suggesting a segregated classroom as a solution to something that is not even a problem is wrong. We learn best when we are immersed in a language. The class diversity is also a reminder why SEL is so vital to our division in our classrooms. The brief annual training being offered is critical to the staff, helping all of our students navigate relationships and conflict in a classroom for a healthier and safer experience for all WJCC schools. I'd like to shift points here. I also want to touch on the incorrect remarks about our pay scale. The tier system only applies to educators and not to any of our vital support staff. So when a board member implied we all will automatically get raises and then proceeds to vote no on the budget, that guarantees a raise for support staff, they are telling those same employees that they are not valued. Even for educators who are paid via the tier system, a year of service does not correlate with each tier level. A teacher can be employed five years and be on Tier Three, or employed twelve years and be on Tier Eight, meaning we are not ensuring that they are given a salary that even attempts to keep up with the continued inflation cost. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Howlett.
Our next speaker is Beth Ann Claver, followed by Kim Long.
Good evening. My name is Beth Ann Claver, and I am a resident of the Stonehouse District. And I came here tonight based on comments that were made at the last meeting. They did not represent me or many of my neighbors in the Stonehouse District. We want our schools to be inclusive, welcoming communities who celebrate the children who attend. Comments were made about students with additional needs maybe needing to be segregated and kept in separate areas, and as someone with a background in special education, that really made me upset, because I want all of our students, regardless of their needs, whether they are multilingual learners, whether they have disabilities, whether they are gifted, any additional needs that students may have above and beyond the rest of their general education peers should be celebrated and should be supported in our schools. And if students have additional needs, then I think the question should not be, you know, how can we separate them, but how can we provide additional support, additional training, additional staff? How can we pay our teachers better to keep our wonderful teachers in our school division? Those are the kind of questions that I think should be asked, instead of suggesting things like separating them into separate classrooms. Another comment that was made that made me very concerned was that parents should be notified or given a heads-up when students who transfer into schools have some of those additional needs, like multilingual learners. This is a very big issue for me, because I believe privacy of our students is vital to the success of our school division and for their safety. And the Family Educational Rights Protection Act, FERPA, is very important, and so I was a little concerned that a member of the school board who is supposed to represent me is not aware of the importance of privacy of our students, and that some comments about the needs of students in our schools is any business of the other parents. So thank you so much for the comments, and I appreciate you.
Thank you, Ms. Claver.
Our next speaker is Kim Long, followed by Karen Bergasal.
I'm Kimberly Long, the granddaughter of non-English-speaking immigrants, a WJCC faculty member and a member of the Stonehouse District. I have three children who have graduated or will be graduating from WJCC schools. We are proud sea stars, tigers, and lions. I cannot ignore the comments made by a certain member about non-English-speaking students. Those comments do not represent my family's beliefs. My hope was that the member would clarify their statement and apologize for how they spoke about members of our community. Instead, they continued to use inflammatory language and blame other members of the board. In my time as a proud James River Dolphin, we taught our students to be inquirers, communicators, thinkers, and risk-takers. We encouraged them to be reflective, caring, open-minded, balanced, and principled. I encourage that member to work on these traits within themselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Long.
Our next speaker is Karen Bergasal, followed by Jaclyn Williams, Trevor Topping, Chris Henderson, and Amy Cork.
We are all here tonight because we want the best possible education for our children, but we sometimes disagree about how best to achieve that. I'd like to highlight a misconception that I noticed at the last meeting. There seems to be confusion about what social and emotional learning, or SEL, is and is not. I'd like to offer some clarification. The following quote is from the Virginia Department of Education Guidance Standards for Social-Emotional Learning, as found on the Virginia DOE website. "Social and emotional learning is an integral part of education and human development. SEL is the process through which young people and adults acquire and apply the knowledge, skills, and attitudes to develop healthy identities, manage emotions, and achieve personal and collective goals, feel and show empathy for others, establish and maintain supportive relationships, and make responsible and caring decisions. Social-emotional learning begins at home and continues through adulthood. Embedding SEL intentionally in school culture advances the work that begins and continues at home." I was at last month's school board meeting. It opened with a very moving presentation from Laurel Lane Principal Dr. Swan about the school's initiative called Josh's Kindness Squad that honors their late classmate Joshua Peck's legacy of kindness, service, and care for others. We saw children's learning enhanced by such activities as writing messages of kindness to staff and participating in buddy classes for reading so that older students can help younger ones. It was a beautiful example of what social-emotional learning looks like.
Our next speaker is Jaclyn Williams, followed by Trevor Topping.
I'm Jaclyn Bridgeforth-Williams, the founder and executive director of the Village Initiative. I am here this evening to continue the message of equity. The Village Initiative is honored to have received the prestigious FitzTurner Award this past weekend from the Virginia Educators Association. Thank you to the amazing educators all over Virginia, and especially the teachers and educators of this community. We thank you for continuing the partnerships that we started in 2016. Thank you for welcoming the Local Black Histories Project into Williamsburg-James City County Schools, along with the heroic class of 1969. You should hear from all of them, their courage, along with the pain and trauma they carry today. I think about our multilingual students as you speak about them and the experiences that they're having or may have, based on some of the comments that have been made this evening. I think about the pain. I think about people like my parents, who weren't welcomed into certain schools, and we need to remember that that trauma is heavy, and we carry it generation after generation. Grandparents, you need to change. You need to change what you've done, what you're doing, and what you're saying. We need change, and we have to agree that representation matters. Yet, we continue to lack representation of teachers of color in our classrooms. Research shows that students perform far better and are held to higher expectations and are more likely to graduate on time and attend college when they have teachers that look like them. Yet, at every school in our district, the student population is more diverse than the teaching staff. Example, James River has the largest percentage of students of color, seventy-seven point three percent, but one of the smallest percentages of teachers of color at just four point two percent. Data matters, but the condition of the heart and the minds of people, that is what is most important, and will move us as a school system and as a community. These inequities are over fifty years later.
Thank you, Ms. Williams.
Our next speaker is Trevor Topping, followed by Chris Henderson.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board. I'm here today because I'm concerned for our kids' education in James City County. I'm very concerned with the leadership in the county and on the board in front of me. Leaders must bring uncomfortable topics to the forefront to lead dialogue and debate. A board member brought up very reasonable questions that parents want to know the answers to. Educating all of our students, no matter their background, should absolutely be our goal, but at some point, you have to start to question the methods, budgets, and procedures we have in place to put our teachers and students in the best place to succeed. Ladies and gentlemen, most teachers I speak to in the community and surrounding communities financial planning tell me the kids are two or three years behind. This goes back to the lockdowns and how schools were closed, which goes back to some of the board's decisions. That certainly negatively impacted our children. Are students in a better place to learn skills like reading and math when they are already two or three years behind? If teachers are focusing their time on non-English-speaking students, these skills will hopefully lead next generation to getting a job that can not only outpace inflation, but also the high cost of living. In today's hyper-competitive world, are they getting the best that we can do at this point in time? It is a question worth asking. A board member got elected because people in the community trusted him to represent their interest on the board. A board member asking questions should lead to real debate, which should lead to real solutions to put our teachers and students in the best place to get a quality education. Haven't heard quality near enough tonight. Calling these questions racist is completely inappropriate, unprofessional, and does an injustice to real racist terms, comments, and people. A member of this board, members of this board, I pray for you that you find it in your heart to apologize to your board member for twisting his words and trying to put a brand on them that was not true. I pray that this board finds a way to work with each other, listen to concerns, even if you do not agree with them.
Thank you, Mr. Topping.
Our next speaker is Chris Henderson, followed by Amy Cork.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Dr. Heron, it's a pleasure to be with you this evening. As most James City County citizens and citizens of Williamsburg, we all have a vested interest in the success of the Williamsburg-James City County school system, and it is incumbent upon you, as our elected and appointed leaders, to discern the best path forward for our school system and our students. We recognize that you are in a difficult position, that as a result of failed immigration policy, you are confronting a situation that requires on-the-spot changes and adaptation. And so, therefore, it's appropriate that we question the mechanisms and the way forward to make sure that we're doing the best for all the children that we have been entrusted to care for. And so, my concern is really out of love, not hate, to love the kids that we have, and let's make sure we do the best job with them that we can. Having hosted foreign exchange students who had English as a second language, I can tell you that as soon as their English proficiency kicked in, their ability to learn and discern in an American classroom rapidly grew. I had an exchange student from Lithuania who had broken English when he arrived. He received a four-year scholarship to Bucknell. He graduated number two in his class and was inducted into Phi Beta Kappa as a junior. So the kids can achieve, can be done, and each individual student will determine their own path, and it's our job to get...
Thank you, Mr. Henderson.
Our next speaker is Amy Cork, followed by Matthew Winary, Sharon Powell, Kim Sidlowski, and Cynthia Baker.
Good evening. My name is Amy Cork. I'm a member of the Village Initiative, a professor at William &amp; Mary, and a parent of two WJCC students. In my capacity as a researcher, I contributed to the production of the Village Initiative's Sixth Annual Equity Report, which you all will receive by email tomorrow. And tonight, I want to highlight some concerning data that was reported by the Virginia Department of Education. We live in a diverse community, and all our students need to feel like they belong. Certainly, a school board member threatening to deny multilingual students their federally protected rights to education is a signal to parents and students that they do not belong, and it's not acceptable in our division. I want to point, I think that these points in support of our multilingual learners have been well-made tonight, and I support everything that people have said. I want to take some time to point to another way in which we make students feel like they don't belong, which is over-disciplining our Black students. And this we see in data from long-term suspensions from the VDOE. The data shows a highly concerning racial discipline gap, meaning that Black students are disproportionately disciplined compared to white students. In 2022-23, Black students made up eighteen percent of our student population, and yet accounted for forty-three percent of long-term suspensions. This is another instance in which our school division is doing worse than other divisions. In 2018, VDOE rated WJCC schools as one of the worst divisions in the state for disproportionately disciplining Black students, and the statistics have seen little change over the past few years. I have heard the administration note that it's often a relatively small number of students that account for short and long-term suspensions, suggesting that this is somehow an individual problem of individual students that needs to be addressed. However, if year after year, and we've done this report for six years now, and the data has not changed, if year after year, it's always Black students who are overrepresented in suspensions data, this suggests it's not an individual problem, but a systemic problem.
Thank you, Ms. Cork.
Our next speaker is Matthew Winary, followed by Sharon Powell.
Good evening, Superintendent and members of the school board. My name is Matthew Winary. I'm a research fellow with the Village Initiative. Firstly, I want to express my support for multilingual students and show solidarity with educators, students, and community members who are here tonight. I also want to draw your attention to findings from the Village's Equity Report related to gifted education data. We asked in the Equity Report whether all students have equitable access to gifted education. Unfortunately, the answer again this year is still no. White students were overrepresented in gifted education, accounting for seventy-seven point two percent of students identified as gifted, while making up only fifty-five point six percent of the student population. Black and Hispanic students were underrepresented, accounting for only five point seven percent and five point nine percent of students identified as gifted, while making up eighteen point four percent and fifteen point six percent, respectively, of the student population. Students are screened for gifted services through standardized tests, and following the screening, students are referred for further evaluation, and they are identified as gifted or not. Teachers and parents can also refer students directly for evaluation. In the Department of Education data, we see that white students were twice as likely to be referred for gifted services than Black and Hispanic students. While six percent of white students were referred for evaluation for gifted services, only two point five percent of Black students and two point five of Hispanic students were referred. WJCC schools are currently piloting a talent development approach to gifted education. This data raises the question, how is success being measured, and how can equity and inclusion for all students be at the forefront of this pilot program? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Winary.
Our next speaker is Sharon Powell, followed by Kim Sidlowski.
My name is Sharon Powell. I'm a resident of James City County and the mother of a kindergartner in a WJCC public school, as well as an immigration lawyer. I have two issues that I wanted to bring up that I've heard from last month's meeting. One about resources available to the school for our ELL learners and their teachers, and then a separate one about immigration status. I am disturbed by the comments that were made in the last meeting to expose our students' immigration status. Advising that parents should be notified of new students entering the classroom, specifically identifying them for being undocumented, who they are, and why they are here, makes me question, what do you want parents to do with that information? Why are you asking to disclose information that is protected by federal law? Because a child's immigration status is protected by federal law, and our schools are mandated to educate all children under Pliler v. Doe. I agree that we should examine the resources needed to assist our ELL students. We should determine how properly educating all of our students impacts our budgets, our students, and our teachers. That conversation focuses on what our school systems need to educate all of our students, regardless of their needs or abilities. But that is not the conversation that was started last month. When you start questioning whether children are here legally and stating that parents should be notified of an undocumented child in their class, a new conversation has been started based on national origin, which is closely tied to race. A child's immigration status is irrelevant, completely irrelevant, to any conversation about their educational needs or abilities. It is irrelevant to the resources required by the classroom, school, or district. It is irrelevant to the teachers and the parents of other students. I hope that our WJCC schools and school board will continue... I hope that our WJCC schools and school board will continue to send a message of welcome to our newcomers and pursue resources that our schools need instead of focusing on immigration status. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Powell. Our next speaker is Kim Sidlowski, followed by Cynthia Baker.
My name is Kim Sidlowski. I'm a retired teacher and a recent resident of Williamsburg. We all want to educate our children, and we want them to have an equal education. But when I was teaching, there were times when I would get children that no one even really knew where they came from. They'd get off the bus, and they'd come in the classroom, and you just adjusted and you adapted. But now you have access to wonderful ESL programs. You have to put the money into it. But we had one ESL teacher for the whole county, and she was responsible for all of our students. So that's what you need to look at. You need to look at, you know, what you're willing to spend, and you need to give them access to everything that you can. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sidlowski. Our next speaker is Cynthia Baker, and we've got six more left, so I'm going to read all of them so we can line up. We have Isabel Lox, Bob Studehoff, Samaya Yassin, Joe Catterin, Timothy Vantram, and Ty Legman. Go ahead, Ms. Baker.
I'm Cynthia Baker, and I live in the city of Williamsburg. And this is going to be short and sweet. I feel like a lot of you folks and a lot of the folks behind me are missing the point. This was a budget meeting last week, last 3/19. I have to tell you, I was not there, but I certainly heard about it, and I played it over and over and over and over. And, you know, I want to thank you for raising the budget questions, because I want to know how you're spending my money. That's the long and short of it. And are you going to be spending it wisely? And those were great questions that he asked. And why, there were questions that he said he didn't get the answers. He asked for the information, he did not get the answers. And I'll ask you, why did he not-
You can't, you can't not address other people other than the chair.
Well, I would ask why he did not get the answers. And each and every one of you ought to worry about that. If you have questions and you don't get the answers, why are you not getting the answers? And you ought to help your colleagues to get the answers they need to do their job. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Baker. Next speaker is Isabel Lox.
Good evening, Superintendent and members of the school board. My name is Isabel Lox. I'm a research fellow with the Village Initiative and will be presenting the findings from our sixth annual equity report. The data I present today comes from the Virginia Department of Education. I am focusing on the needs of our English learners in WJCC schools. Our English learners are important and valued members of our community, and they deserve to have their needs met in our school system. However, the teachers supporting English learners need more staff and more administrative support and investment to meet the needs of our English learners. This is particularly the case at James Blair Middle School. Only 14% of English learners at James Blair pass the English reading SOL, compared to 26% of English learners across the division and 32% of English learners across the state. WJCC also falls short in supporting English learners to graduation. On average, WJCC on-time graduation rates are above state averages, yet graduation rates for our English learners have been below state averages for the third consecutive school year. In 2022 to 23, only 65% of English learners in WJCC schools graduated on time, while 73% of English learners did so across the state. We are pushing English learners out of the school system by not providing the support they need to succeed and graduate on time. WJCC schools is also not doing enough to support English learners to attend college. Fewer than four in 10 English learners in WJCC schools go on to college, trailing the state average. I end with this: Our English learners offer amazing linguistic and cultural diversity to our schools. We must provide them the support to succeed and enrich our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lox. Our next speaker is Bob Studehoff, followed by Samaya Yassin.
Good evening. My concern is the splitting of the school district. What I've heard so far is that the positives are focused on the idea of working more closely with William &amp; Mary and Colonial Williamsburg. As far as I know, Colonial Williamsburg has a national program for assisting teachers in learning how to be better history teachers. And I can't imagine that splitting the districts would make them any more valuable to the teachers or principals that work with them. So I'm confused as the pulse. I do know that this study you've done, or at least Williamsburg has done, identifies $18 million of new costs, plus a couple of million dollars a year in ongoing operating budget. I'm understanding from the board supervisor from JCC that there is another layer of cost for JCC in terms of building new facilities that currently the schoolchildren are using in Williamsburg. So as a taxpayer that's interested in you spending money to do all the things that are being asked for, the better English and second language program, the idea of raising teacher salary, of taking care of the buildings that you already have, I'm just wondering, is there enough rationale for either Williamsburg or James City County to split this school district?
Thank you, Mr. Studehoff. Our next speaker is Samaya Yassin, followed by Joe Catterin.
Evening, Superintendent and members of the school board. My name is Samaya Yassin. I'm a research fellow with the Village Initiative and will be presenting findings from our sixth annual equity report. The data I present today comes directly from the Virginia Department of Education. In the 2022 to 2023 school year, Black students made up just 18% of the WJCC student population, yet accounted for 39% of short-term suspensions. The over disciplining of Black students is a problem at all three high schools. At Jamestown High, Black students make up only 9.7% of the total student body, yet accounted for 30.5% of short-term suspensions. At Lafayette High, Black students are only 22% of the student population, yet accounted for 47.5% of all short-term suspensions. At War Hill High, Black students once again only made up 20% of the student population, yet accounted for 37% of short-term suspensions. This data reveals the foundations of the school-to-prison pipeline. I also wanted to show my support to multilingual students, as all students belong in our schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Yassin. Our next speaker is Joe Catterin, followed by Timothy Vantram.
Good evening. I'm Joe. I live in Williamsburg. First, I want to commend everybody here who's advocating for inclusivity in our schools. Equality is a cornerstone of our education system, and we should stand up for it when its importance is disparaged. Last month, comments made on the dais were rightly called out for perpetuating racist tropes, and I think that was totally appropriate. We have to call out racism, no matter how subtly it is expressed. I say subtly, but the majority of people here saw it for what it was. Questioning the legal status of non-English speaking students is racist. It's racist because it discriminates against these children based on what language they speak, which is often tied to their ethnicity. The subtle way in which this racist view is expressed is an example of dog whistling, which means using coded language to sneakily perpetuate discriminatory views. Unfortunately, in Virginia, in education, we have a long history of dog whistling. For example, the massive resistance reaction to the Brown v. Board of Education ruling, which used language like "school choice" to argue against children of color accessing equal education. And today, the term illegals is being used in the same way to justify discrimination against students who speak different languages. This is old-fashioned, outdated, and unacceptable racism. Yes, freedom of speech is a right, but as school board members, we hold you to a higher standard. I'll remind you that the board's own code of conduct includes a commitment to nondiscrimination and equity for all students. In the coming weeks, let's reaffirm our commitment to inclusivity, diversity, and equality at WJCC. It's our duty as adults to look out for every child in this community, regardless of what language they speak, their background, or their immigration status. Holding each other accountable to these principles is the only way to create a learning environment that truly serves all students. And that means if a school board member says something racist, they should be called racist. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Timothy Vantram.
Good evening. My name is Timothy Vantram. I'm a veteran of Desert Storm, Southern Watch, Noble Eagle, Novum Anvil, Iraqi Freedom. But tonight, I'm here as a taxpayer, and I'm curious where the funds would come from if this school district did pursue the policies that one of its members put forward? Because those policies would entail a boatload of lawsuits, and we would be looking at hundreds of thousands of tax dollars being siphoned off, I would guess, from the school system. That would mean impact sports, after-school activities, everything. So what I'd really like to know is, is this an actual search for a new way to do things and endurance of what the law was? Or are you trying to siphon off taxpayer funds from the public schools? What are you trying to do here?
Please address the chair.
I'm sorry. But that's my question. What is the purpose of this? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vantram. Our final speaker is Ty Legman.
I'm Ty Legman. I'm a resident of James City County in the Powhatan District. I imagine you guys are pretty exhausted. What I saw take place a couple of weeks ago, it seems like it's an issue of leadership for the board. I know there's a lot going on. This budget process started in August. Four members joined in January, so it's kind of a fast-moving train. So I get that, you know, process-wise, maybe this or that, you know, do things this way or that way. But it does seem like there's a lack of empathy or an effort to try to understand what the other person's wanting to get across instead of jumping out. So my suggestion for the board is embrace Robert's Rules of Order for conduct of a meeting. It's well-established, it does preclude personal attacks, it does allow the person or you to stop it. And then take the time. I know you can't meet with, you know, more than two people at a time, but who amongst you has actually engaged with the other to try to figure out what they were trying to get across? A lot of bias going on. Everybody hears what they want to hear. It's not going to work for the board to work that way. You have to be a team. So I wish you guys great success. Listen, there's not a lot more money out there, so everyone keep talking about more money, more money. I can tell you that recent tax assessment rates increases for the county are straining people. So we're going to have to figure out how to do with what we have. So that's what I wanted to share. Good luck.
Thank you, Mr. Legman. I believe that concludes our public comment, and we are going to take a brief five-minute recess, primarily for the board members, and we will reconvene in five at 8:38. primarily for the board members, and we will reconvene in five at 8:38. Thank you for giving us a few minutes to stretch our legs. We will now reconvene this meeting of the Williamsburg James City County School Board, and we will continue on with our consent agenda. And I will read through that. Yeah, before I ask for a motion. We are looking to approve item 7.01, Approval of Financial Report and Monthly Bills and Payroll for March 2024. Item 7.02, Approval of the Minutes from 3/15/24 Joint Meeting. Item 7.03, Approval of Minutes from 3/19/24 Meeting. Item 7.04, Approval of Minutes from 4/9/24 Meeting. Item 7.05, Approval of Resolution R1324 National Teacher Appreciation Week. Item 7.06, Approval of Resolution R1424 National School Nurse Day. Item 7.07, Approval of Resolution R1524 Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. Item 7.08, Approval of Revisions to Policy EFC, Energy Management Conservation Policy. Item 7.09, Approval of Retirement of Policy EFM, Environmentally Sustainable Practices. And item 7.10, Approval of Revisions to Policy JM, Physical Restraint and Seclusion. Can I get a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, Mrs. Hunley. Is there a second?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Riffle. Ms. Aller, when you're ready.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mr. Riffle.
Aye.
Dr. Cavazos.
Aye.
Ms. Chen.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Mr. Hosang.
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye.
All right, we will now move on to individual action items. Item 8.01, Approval of Personnel Actions. Can I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'm moved to approve the personnel actions as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Riffle. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Ms. Chen. Ms. Aller.
Mr. Riffle.
Aye.
Dr. Cavazos.
Aye.
Ms. Chen.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Mr. Hosang.
Aye. Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye.
Item 8.02, Approval of the Special Education Annual Plan for 2024-25 and the Title 4B Flow Through Funds. Can I have a motion?
I recommend approval of the special, approval of the local plan and budget for career. No, that's, we'll be on point. I'm sorry.
Point 02.
Point 02, I'm sorry. Approval of the Special Education Annual Plan 2024-2025 and the Title 6B Flow Through Funds.
Thank you, Dr. Cavazos, and I think I misread that earlier. That is 6B. Is there a second? Second. Thank you, Mrs. Hunley. Ms. Aller.
Dr. Cavazos.
Aye.
Ms. Chen.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Mr. Hosang.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mr. Riffle.
Madam Clerk, could we restate this motion?
Certain.
I don't think we read it correctly. It's at least the recommended action. It's not. Am I wrong in that?
You can, I think you read it.
Just want to make sure. Okay. Sorry, I'm on A then. I just want to make sure. Sorry.
I think he said it correctly.
Maybe I was confused by the number. I'm just trying to-
There's no number in the recommended action.
No, I mean like the number we're on, because I didn't hear the exact one.
Okay. All right, Dr. Cavazos, would you reread item 8.02?
Item 8.02, Approval of the Special Education Annual Plan 2024-2025 and the Title 6B Flow Through Funds.
As presented.
As presented.
Thank you, Dr. Cavazos. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Riffle. Sorry, Ms. Aller, will you restart the vote?
Dr. Cavazos.
Aye.
Ms. Chen.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Mr. Hosang.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mr. Riffle.
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye.
All right, item 8.03, Approval of the Local Plan and Budget for Career and Technical Education Carl D. Perkins Grant for School Year 2024-25. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the local plan and budget for career and technical education, the Carl D. Perkins Grant for School Year 2024-25 as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Hosang.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Riffle. And is there any discussion? Okay, Ms. Aller.
Mr. Hosang.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mr. Riffle.
Aye.
Dr. Cavazos.
Aye.
Ms. Chen.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye.
Item 8.04, Approval of Purchase Request for Fire Panel Replacement at Warhill High School. Can I have a motion?
I move to approve the purchase request for fire panel replacement at Warhill High School using BFPE Contract Number 2022-1180 for a total cost of $190,660.56.
Thank you, Ms. Chen. Is there a second?
Second.
I'm going to give it to Mrs. Hunley. Is there any discussion? Nope. Ms. Aller.
Ms. Chen.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Mr. Hosang.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mr. Riffle.
Aye.
Dr. Cavazos.
Aye.
And Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye.
Item 8.05, Approval of Award of Invitation for Bid Number 20240891 Interior Refurbishment of Berkeley Middle School. Can I please have a motion?
I move to approve the award of invitation for bid number 20240891 Interior Refurbishment of Berkeley Middle School to GC Commercial in the amount of $331,607.89.
Thank you, Mrs. Hunley. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Chen. Is there any discussion? Ms. Aller.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mr. Riffle.
Aye.
Dr. Cavazos.
Aye.
Ms. Chen.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Mr. Hosang.
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye.
Item 8.06, Approval of Purchase Request for the Interior Refurbishment of Matoka Elementary School. Can I have a motion?
I move to approve the purchase request for the interior refurbishment of Matoka Elementary School to Bay River Contracting in the amount of $303,710.40.
Thank you, Ms. Chen. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hosang. Any discussion? Ms. Aller.
Ms. Chen.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Mr. Hosang.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mr. Riffle.
Aye.
Dr. Cavazos.
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye.
Item 8.08, Approval of Purchase Request and Installation for Berkeley Middle School Light Fixtures Upgrades. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the purchase request for Berkeley Middle School light fixtures upgrades to gray bar under OMNIA contract number EV2370 in the amount of $54,961. And the installation to Bay River Contractors performed under annual contract number 21-14846 in the amount of $47,100 for a total cost of $102,061.90.
Thank you, Mrs. Donner. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Riffle. Any discussion? Ms. Aller.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Mr. Hosang.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mr. Riffle.
Aye.
Dr. Cavazos.
Aye.
Ms. Chen.
Aye.
And Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye.
Item. Did I miss it? 8.7? Oh, I apologize. I missed an item. Go back to 8.07. Approval of Award of Invitation for Bid Number 2- sorry, Number 20240831 Norwich Elementary School Electrical Upgrades. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the award of invitation for bid number 20240831 Norwich Elementary School Electrical Upgrades to Tali Electric in the amount of $143,0365.
Thank you, Mr. Hosang. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Riffle. Ms. Aller.
Mr. Hosang.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mr. Riffle.
Aye.
Dr. Cavazos.
Aye.
Ms. Chen.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
And Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye.
Have we done 8.08?
Yes.
Okay, so we're on 8.09. All right, teamwork makes the dream work. All right. Item 8.09, Approval of Purchase Request and Installation for the Stonehouse Walk-In Refrigerator Replacement. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the purchase request for the Stonehouse Walk-In Refrigerator Replacement to Crest Food Services under cooperative contract hashtag UCPJMU5530 in the amount of $98,897. And the installation to TGM performed under the annual contract number sign 2024051BP in the amount of $39,931.93 for a total cost of $138,828.93.
Thank you, Mr. Riffle. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Hunley. Is there any discussion? Just complete with a ramp.
Let's go.
Ms. Aller.
Mr. Riffle.
Aye.
Dr. Cavazos.
Aye.
Ms. Chen.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Mr. Hosang.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
And Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye.
All right, 8.10, Approval of Purchase Request for Jamestown Weight Room Expansion. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the purchase request for Jamestown Weight Room Expansion to TMG Contractors under annual contract number 20240155B in the amount of $119,325.74.
Thank you, Mrs. Hunley. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Ms. Chen. Any discussion? Ms. Aller.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mr. Riffle.
Aye.
Dr. Cavazos.
Aye.
Ms. Chen.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Mr. Hosang.
Aye.
And Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye.
And last but not least, Item 8.11, Approval of Purchase Request of Three Maintenance Vans and Associated Budget Transfer. Can I please have a motion?
I move to approve the purchase request for three maintenance vans to Carter Meyer Automotive in the amount of $118,318 in the associated budget transfer.
Thank you, Ms. Chen.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Riffle. Any discussion? Seeing none. Ms. Aller.
Ms. Chen.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Mr. Hosang.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mr. Riffle.
Aye.
Dr. Cavazos.
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye.
All right, we will now move on to board member comments. Mr. Riffle, can I start with you?
Sure thing. Well, last Thursday, I had the pleasure of attending the Alternative Pathways to Careers. That was an amazing showing from our community to come out and learn about this exciting program from I Teach. And I think it was over 50 individuals there. It was great to see members of our community and just people who are interested in becoming educators through this pathway. So Dr. Haring, your team did a great job of facilitating more chairs in the room. And people were standing around, like, wanting to hear more about become teachers and educators in our division. So Mr. Baker and your team, great job. Also on Thursday night, what a great day to be Randy Riffle. I went to the Jameson High School Mary Poppins Production. That was an amazing show. It was practically perfect, if I could use a line from the show. It's pretty interesting and amazing to see our students organized in ways like this. They are truly acting like adults, and it's important to see that on display and to show their talents and to be a part of the arts. So it's always a pleasure to be a part of that. I visited two schools. I went to James Blair Middle with Ms. Huntley, and then CBB today by myself, which was a great time. I think I recommend, if you can go by yourself, it's like you can ask as many questions you want, and there's no pressure. But it was a great experience to be at one of the schools that does have trailers and to kind of see a lunchroom that's like bolted and things like that, which is an interesting layout for a school. To hear from just staff and how they're implementing their reading curriculum. It was a wonderful time. And then I'm looking forward to my student advisory committee coming up next week with Ms. Chen. And then Family Fest on following Friday. I would love to attend and see our little kindergartners getting enrolled, so looking forward to that. Tomorrow is a big day in Virginia politics. It is the veto session or the reconvene session where the general assembly gathers themselves after the allotted 30 days to vote on all of the governor's proposed amendments and budgetary changes, which really affects here as the rubber beats the road. And like I'd like to hit on again is there are some steps we should take as a division and as two joint partners to further move ourselves to maybe highlight some of the problems that we do have with our limited budget from the LCI, from things that we're not receiving because of how much funds there are available. This is an important step we need to take, and I think it really does kind of come to these harder, tough questions that we need to ask. Like, are we doing our part when we create a legislative agenda? Are we doing our part when it comes to advocating and maybe partnering with other divisions who are having similar problems like us? Our LCI is, if you look at the data, it's pretty close to like where people are in NOVA. Like, we don't have a tax base. We don't send our property tax money down to other local government places, and that's just the reality of where we are. And so I really would like to see us forward as a board and as the two local governments to maybe look into this. And let's start with the support cap as a thing we should ask for moving forward. Because we didn't really get that in this biennial budget as the general assembly had hoped. It was in the Senate budget, but it was removed, and the governor didn't put it in, so, which would really help our vision. So that's all I have to say. I appreciate everyone's comments tonight. I would like people to look into some of these things as they look into some of the things they brought up, like Richmond and how the Dillon Rule works or how this board operates. There's a lot of procedures and things that you just don't get to see, and it's kind of tough to sit here as someone who's pretty young and has a lot more experience in the outside world with how this stuff works. And it's a little disheartening to an extent, but it's also important that we maybe share some of the ways we move forward as a board and how we can, you know, work together. I'm happy to be here. I'm excited to, you know, hear from the public, you know, whether it's good or bad. It's not really my job to care, you know. It's my job to care about students. It's not about me. It's not about anyone sitting here. Like, my name looks great on a sign, but I didn't get here to keep doing that. So I appreciate everyone's comments tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Riffle. Mr. Hosang.
Yes, ma'am chair. I first want to read a letter that the board has received from a taxpayer citizen of James City County who could not be here tonight. We, as a board, have received this letter, but they wanted me to read it to the populace and to the taxpayers out here. And I'm going to read it as it's written, so when I'm saying my name is so-and-so, it's not going to be me.
Excuse me, Mr. Hosang. If this was for board member comments, people cannot yield their time to other people to speak on their behalf.
No one's yielding their time. I'm just reading-
You're presenting a public comment.
I'm just reading the statement that was provided.
It's presented as a public comment, was it not?
What she's saying is that's not your statement, it's someone else's statement.
It is, but it should-
This is a board member comment. This comment should be your comment.
It appears that some of you misunderstood intentionally or otherwise what I was saying at the last public board meeting and listened to the dog whistle of calling me a racist. We were talking- We were talking about the budget. I and many others had questions on several issues that affect the budget and the impact the proposed budget would have on all our students. Questions that remain unanswered when it came time to vote. I, in good conscience, could not agree to spend our tax dollars when I was unsure what those tax dollars would be spent on. The impact of those expenditures within the system and particularly the impact of the quality of education, uh, of education all students would receive. Contrary, contrary to the misguided and incendiary charge leveled at me by certain board members of this, members of this board and then taken up by a vocal minority, I am not a racist. My questions were not racist. And proposing a solution that other schools, districts have implemented with success is not racist. At least I offered a solution instead of incendiary name-calling to try to get my point across. At least I had the guts to stand up for my convictions and make my own decision as opposed to just going along with the crowd. How is any student receiving a decent education when the teacher is being torn in two trying to educate both English and non-English speaking students? I've had multiple teachers tell me that this is exactly what is going on this year and has been going on for several years. And until I dared to raise this impactful budgetary issue, the district taxpayers would have been left uninformed. Keeping our heads buried in the sand, ignoring the issue and keeping the issue out of the taxpayer's sight, hoping it would just go away does an immense disservice to our taxpayers and above all, the student body of this district. I was elected to, to, I was not elected to continue the status quo. I was elected to ensure all our students receive the best education we can provide. And without asking the needed questions and receiving the necessary answers, our students will fail because we will have failed them. Voting just to get along is not how I was raised and not what I was elected for. I was raised to stand for my convictions, even if it means standing alone. And many of my constituents told me that is what they wanted. Not everyone is going to be happy with what this board does or how members may vote. We received and are still receiving emails from employees saying that we didn't do enough with the budget. We're never going to please everyone, so if I can leave here with my head high, I've done my job. At the end of the day, I need to ensure that I can live with my decisions and that I am doing what I believe is best for our students. You may not like our decisions as a board or my decisions, but name-calling helps no one and only hurts our students moving forward. I will not waver. I will not forego my convictions. I will not let my voters down. And I will do what I believe is in the best interest of our students. I will not fail any and all students of this district or the taxpayers who provide their hard-earned monies to provide the best education we can provide. I ran on bringing common sense and transparency back to this board and school system and that is why I will continue to do without hesitation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hoseng. Mrs. Hunley?
So, um, I attended James Blair Middle School with Mr. Riffle and, um, wanted to thank Mr. Littleton and his staff for letting us just take our time and peruse through the school. We were there two hours. Didn't, we, we did, it didn't seem like that and all of a sudden I said, oh my gosh, we've been here two hours. But all the schools we tour, the, the administrators want us to see the wonderful things that are happening in the school. They're not constrained to a time limit. And so, um, we got to see a class change, which some people would have been afraid to say, do we want a school board member to see what happens when kids are all milling through the hall? And we did that. And I think it's important for us as board members, as we sit on this dais, when we get opportunities to go into schools so that when we sit here, we can give some factual information. Um, the second thing that just gave me joy and pleasure was going to two Mary Poppins, um, performances. One was, um, Mr. Stone, who is the, the theater teacher, had written a grant through our foundations, school foundations to do an adaptive version of Mary Poppins for the special needs population. And three high schools came to get to, to see that. And he took everything into consideration with the lighting, the noise level. Each child got a bag with, um, fidget or sensory toys in them, uh, signed, um, picture of the two cast members. They got stretch breaks, uh, snack breaks, and then they got to eat with the cast at, in the cafeteria. And you should have seen those children's faces. It was just, it was beautiful. And then I got to see the long version of Mary Poppins. And you know, I think that soundtrack, certain songs are still playing in my head even as of yesterday. And, um, I always like to look at what the directors say in their, um, most of them, if you go to their plays, I know now they make you turn these in, but I took mine. But the, the one thing that, that Mr. Stone wanted people to know is two things can be true. And like one thing said, you know, is the park a boring place or is it a wonderful fantasy? And there were different sets where two things were true. And I, I think about that often. Sometimes we're in this position where we want to win, like one person has to be right, one person has to be wrong. But what if two, two things were true? So it was something for me to ponder after reading what his message was that. And I appreciate all the people that came out to speak and, um, I had planned on wearing blue anyway because I thought about when I was a teacher, the best, um, when we used to have con- convocation, all the teachers would come together and we would have a keynote speaker. The best speaker we ever had was a man that came and talked about the Blueberry Story. I'm not going to tell you what the Blueberry Story is, but I would like, if you get a chance, just go Google the Blueberry Story. It talks a lot about what we have here in the public schools. I am clear that we are W J C C P S and that P stands for public. There are some things that just have to happen when you're in a public school. There are some parameters. It does not stand for P for private school. There are wonderful things that happen in private schools. There are things that you are, you are afforded to have in a private school that we cannot have in a public school. We are not, we do not have the initial of C H for Christian school or charter school. My husband taught in the Christian school. A child can come up to you with a boo-boo and you can pray for them. There are things that are afforded in a Christian school and a charter school that we cannot do in public school. And we are not, uh, H for homeschool. And I have friends that homeschool their children and it works for a lot of kids. They don't have to go to P E, music, gym. When they get into subjects, they can barter with another family. Hey, can you teach the history and I'll do the biology? And it works. And then we have children that come out of all of those settings back into public schools because sometimes those school settings cannot take children that have discipline issues or learning disabilities. So I just want to remind everybody that we are W J C C public schools. We are a awesome school. We're doing amazing things. Do we have things to work on? Yes. Go back to Mary Poppins. I'm going to believe two things are true and we are practically perfect. And we're going to get there, but we need the help of the community. We need to be a team. And that's what we're striving for because that's what our children deserve. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hunley. Dr. Cavassos?
Yeah, I'll be brief. Tonight, we made a special notice of the exceptional performance of our volunteers and participants of other programs. It's commendable. They have made selfless efforts to share their talents with others. And I, for one, deeply appreciate that. Thank you very much to all who received an award tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Cavassos. Ms. Chen.
Um, I also enjoyed, um, my kids and I went to see Mary Poppins. It was incredible and amazing. So Lafayette High School and Warhol High School have their musicals coming up, I think, to Anna Middle School as well. Um, so I would highly recommend, um, getting your tickets now and going to see those shows. Speaking of volunteers, I also wanted to, um, just spend, send a special thank you to those volunteers and any of those public comments tonight that addressed any sort of doubt or uncertainty and the, um, wonderful things that are happening in our school system. I would encourage you to volunteer, um, talk to teachers, um, talk to the students. I commend the one student who came and spoke. Um, I think that was a very brave thing to do, to give a firsthand account of what is happening in our schools and the reality and the truth of it. Everybody is doing their best and everybody is working hard. Doctor, um, sorry, Ms. Ms. Donner and I visited, um, Hornsby Middle School and Warhol High School this past week. And we saw how our students are showing up every day and their families are encouraging them to show up at school ready to learn. I have great and deep respect, uh, for our teachers, our counselors, administrators, support staff and everybody who day in and day out dedicates, um, time and love and attention to creating an inclusive, student-focused, engaging, meaningful experience for all of our students. At our visits, we learned, um, I particularly wanted to highlight that at our visits, we learned about how the diversity and differences of our students are celebrated and supported. Such as our military families, um, special interest club, such as the Dude Be Kind Club. We got to witness students, um, exploring their musical talents, um, amazing artwork, um, theater, student-run theater. We got to learn about athletics and, and all these places where students can learn and grow and become their own individuals. I also haven't, it just, this wasn't part of my prepared comments, but I just wanted to say that having worked in education as a teacher, um, having continuing to work in education now, um, as a writer, as an editor, um, I've yet to meet a teacher who says that they are being torn in two about anything that has to do about children. I only see teachers, especially those in our school system, who are growing their hearts for children. Their hearts are full. They model kindness. They model hard work. They are inclusive. And we have received an overwhelming number of emails that support that message. And the teachers and the, the people who work day in and day out in our school system who came here tonight, they shared that message as well.
Thank you, Ms. Chen. Mrs. Donner?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As school board members, there's so many aspects to the role that we're asked to do. We're asked to do the important, but may seem mundane of fire panels and refurbishments. We have the opportunity to visit schools the way, uh, Ms. Chen and I were joined at the hip, as she mentioned, at Hornsby as well as Warhol this week and getting to see those wonderful programs. I had the opportunity to join the Williamsburg Health Foundation as they did a site visit for our SHIP program. That is an opportunity where Williamsburg Health Foundation supports us for almost seven hundred thousand dollars, uh, a year in order to support SHIP. And what SHIP does amongst other things within the community, it allows us to have, um, our students exposed to both cooking, to physical activity, to things after school and in the classroom. We had the opportunity to visit, uh, down in the cafeteria at Matthew Whaley and those kids were making the most delicious salad I have ever seen. It was plated beautifully. And so they're learning about healthy foods, uh, as well as, um, as well as just how to enjoy cooking and, and bring that, making that lifelong. And so I think those are all really, really important things that we do. We are also tasked with understanding budgets, what we're voting for, policies. And, um, in doing that, I think Mr. Riffle, he alluded to that there are many ways in which we as a school board receive, receive information. So there's lots of opportunity for us and we try to ask as many questions as we can in the public forum during our work sessions. Sometimes if we have something that we haven't quite worked through in a work session, we'll bring it here to the school board meeting and we'll have a little bit more discussion here and we get that out to the public. But then there's also a way where we do things free of school board questions. And school board questions are a way of right in the moment, in the meeting, you're processing, you have an opportunity and you're you're curious about something that came up. And so, um, as part of this discussion around the budget, uh, there were some questions asked around different, different aspects of it. And I think one of the things that we were remiss last time is to acknowledge that there is an intimation that questions were asked and that the administration didn't answer them. And that's actually not true. So there were some questions around S E L work and that question was actually asked on February eleventh. And so we receive on a weekly basis a superintendent's report and attached to them were school board questions. So every time us as a school board member, we ask a question of staff, that question is logged, it is answered and that answer is, is sent back to all of the school board members. So on, so on March seventh, we all received information about S E L. And a lot of the questions that were brought up during that budget conversation had been asked in February, had been answered by March seventh and were available to all school board members prior to our vote on the budget. Secondarily, there was questions around, you know, about great English language learners. And again, with the school board question, that question was asked on March third. And so admittedly, we did not receive that information until March twentieth, so after we took the vote. However, the way that that question was posed was not posed as a budget question. And so I'm going to share something because this is all freedom of information. This is all available. And so I think there's been lots of questions around, right, we're talking about critical thinking. So as a critical thinker, how do you hear what you're hearing and then how do you link it? Right? And so as a critical thinker, hearing wi- the way that, we had a discussion on English language learners, right? And it was tied to a portion of the budget where we are increasing our F T E for someone who's going to predominantly help our Spanish-speaking families. Right? It is correct. It was not said Spanish-speaking during that meeting. It was English language learners. But the critical thinking is what was that question tied to? And then to actually see what the actual question was, which was not tied to the budget. But in the actual question, I think as we talk about dog whistles, we talk about, I think it's, and why I'm reading this is not to, it's twofold. One, I think, is that we all have to have intellectual honesty around the information that we receive. And so if we want to run with a narrative and we receive information that perhaps is counter to that narrative, if we're talking about honesty and integrity, then we need to be honest about the information that we've received. Secondarily, I think it's really important for the viewing public to understand there's, tonight I heard sort of this narrative that there were large numbers of English language learners coming, that there had, it's been this dramatic increase. And all of us as of March twentieth have the same information around what's the actual truth around that. And so the truth is that the actual question that was asked spoke about a large group of Spanish-speaking males, approximately twenty, who started at Warhol High School. That is untrue. In the information that was provided to us by our, by our, um, our central office, at Warhol High School, there were six students representing different genders and ethnicities enrolled between February first and March fourth. So again, there is no large influx. The intimation, again, critical thinking, was that this was at Warhol High School and that is categorically untrue. And all board members have that information. And then the question around like tying it to national origin, racism, all of that, when you actually read the nature of the question, it was very inflammatory. It pulled in a lot of, um, tropes and things that are national conversations that are untrue. In talking about why aren't parents, why aren't our, our, why aren't parents being, um, notified? Right? The quote is, "Our children's safety is at issue here, especially these individuals are undocumented and illegal, all coming in at once, especially with the attention around the country of illegals raping, killing others, including students." So I want to understand that as a school board member who is responsible for making sure that we are educating all English language learners and all children, if I say something that is very uncomfortable for people to hear, it is not based in- it is not based in trying to light a match. It is not based in trying to make it difficult to work together as a board. It's based in truth and reading things. And so this is a piece of information that is available to anybody in the public. And so I think that is what we have to understand is that, right, from the board, you hear 2%, 3%, 5% of whatever we choose to share. But there is a large, it's right at the tip of the iceberg, there's a large iceberg underneath with a lot more truth, a lot more honesty. And so I think as a board, let's be honest moving forward. If we have information that maybe runs counter to what we learned, right, we have an opportunity to provide that clarification before going to maybe publication in other places. Right? There is, there is, as a board member, if you say, I didn't see it, right, as a board, it is our responsibility to read our emails, right, and to stay on top of those things. So I just kind of, as we put forward as a board, right, we need to move forward. We need to come back to the purpose of this board, which is to focus on the education of children, to make sure that we are doing it with open hearts, with loving hearts, with embracing those that may be similar to us, that may be different than us, that maybe that we don't understand. And to also realize, right, we've all grown up in our families, in our societies, and we come to things with biases, some that we don't even realize we have, some that we may realize that we have. And so understanding that the way bias and the way that we experience the world and how we've experienced the world might creep in to the way that we're viewing things. And so being able to be open to, hmm, maybe there's a, maybe there's something else here. Maybe there's something, an opening that I need to have to fully understand. So those are my comments.
Thank you, Mrs. Donner. I want to thank everyone in the public who came out tonight. That was probably the highest turnout we've had, which indicates a high level of passion and care and concern for this community and for our students and for our teachers and staff. And so I appreciate everyone who took time on a Tuesday night when they could have been doing something else and came and expressed their opinion freely. And that's, that's a wonderful thing. I was, there are a couple of things I just want to say. We don't respond, as you know, we don't respond to individual comments. And I couldn't possibly because there were so many. But I just wanted to say for the record, because I've also said this in writing, that the board is fully aware of our legal requirements. We are, as a board, we are supportive and committed to providing a high-quality education for every student. We, our school division welcomes students from a wide array of diverse backgrounds, cultures, and creeds. And we are proud of the fact that our teachers and staff work very hard to meet the specific needs of not only our non-English speaking students, but an array of students that have very individual needs. And that is not in jeopardy of changing. We do have ESL programs. Students are not just thrust into a general education classroom with zero support. I, teachers, our English, our ESL teachers work extremely, extremely hard, so I don't, I don't want them to be erased. I feel like if, I think there's a, maybe unintentionally or intentionally, but there's a, there's a false idea in some people's minds of how these children are welcomed and what is done for them or what is not done for them. And that would, that would erase the very hard work that a lot of incredible teachers do every day. And the last thing I want to say is that no one has ever suggested explicitly or implicitly that, that no one, school board members, that school board members should not ask questions. We are constantly asking questions. You can ask anyone sitting over at those tables over there that have to deal with our many questions. All seven of us ask a lot of questions and we ask good questions. And we ask questions with good intentions and with wanting to improve. Where there is need for improvement, we want to know, we want to see it, and we want to, we just want to help. And so that, that is our role. I, one thing I was encouraged by tonight, I, after hearing so many speakers, certainly our community is divided on comments that were made at the March 19th meeting. But I, I don't actually think our community is divided on whether we should educate non-English speaking students or that they need support or that they need help. I actually didn't hear division on that. I heard a lot of people saying the same thing. Once they got past our comments, they had a lot of the same ideas and goals. Maybe they have different ideas of how to get there. But they, but, but I do believe that our community, and by and large, everyone that was in this room tonight, has good intentions for students in our school division. And I, I think it's, it's time for this conversation to stop being about us, about the things that we are saying and thinking, the seven of us. We are not the focus. The children are the focus. The work is the focus. And so it's time for that conversation, that part to end. We can continue to talk about things that might be going on in various parts of our school division that, that are great, some that need improvement, some that need more money. We'll always talk about needing more money. But, but, but I was encouraged to hear that from, from the community by, as a whole, there was not division on how to treat these students. So I would just say, talk to each other. Continue to talk to each other. Talk to teachers. Talk to other people that were here tonight that, that had a different opinion. Ask questions. Ask for data. If you hear something is broken or something is wrong, say, wow, I'd like to know more about that. You show me the data. That's how we will continue to learn. You can ask us. You can email us. We, we will respond or we will forward your email to a staff member who can respond. So we are, we are here to serve. We are here to help. And, and we are one community. And a house divided against itself cannot stand. And in our house, we have over 11,300 children. So not being able to stand is not an option. So we will stand. We will continue. And we will continue to work very hard for all of our students and teachers and staff. Now we will announce our upcoming events. Policy Committee will meet on April 19th at 8:30 a.m. in room 203 of the school board and central office. Student Advisory Committee will meet on April 24th at 3:00 p.m. at War Hill High School in the media center. The Career Ready Advisory Committee will meet on April 24th as well at 3:30 in room, sorry, 300 of the annex of the school board and central office. VSB A Spring Networking Forum for the Tidewater Region is taking place on April 25th at 5:00 p.m. at IC Norcom High School in Portsmouth, Virginia. We have two board members who are graciously attending that for us. And the Support Employee of the Year Celebration will take place on May 2nd at 10:30 a.m. at King of Glory Church here in Williamsburg. And upcoming meetings, our next meeting will be on May 7th, beginning with closed session at 3:45 in room 300 of the annex, followed by our work session with action items, also May 7th, starting at 4:30 p.m., also room 300 of the annex. Our next meeting after that, oops, it was May 21st. Closed session will begin at 6:00 p.m. in room 300 of the annex. And the regular meeting on May 21st at 6:30 p.m. right here in James Blair Middle School Gymnasium. That, this meeting is adjourned.